Online, so you can hear who's got it for him.
Mr. Chair, can you double check to make sure your mic's on?
I just wanted to test my microphone, so, to see if I could shout loud enough. Thank you for that. I'd like to call to order the Brandon Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. And with that, roll call. Mr. Chansky, could you do roll call for us, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Woodward. Calruth.
Here.
Foley. Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Here.
Gorham.
Yes.
And Duval.
Here. Thank you. All right, at this point, it would a member care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'll volunteer, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item four on our agenda is approval or changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it amounts to a change in the agenda, but we are referring to a property, a bar at 121 Washington, it's really 121 Northeast Washington. When we, when we get moving on, it was C.C.'s on Washington. It's actually not 121 Washington, it's 121 Northeast Washington. Small point.
Thank you.
That's my suggestion, I don't think we have to, we have to.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Change it.
So at this point, looking for a motion then to approve the agenda with the noted point.
So moved.
Jaeger.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair.
All opposed, same sign?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because Commissioner Calruth is virtually.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. We'll do a roll call. Director Chansky, please.
Calruth.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Gorham.
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes.
Point of procedure, if I may, Mr. Foley stepped in, do we need to acknowledge him as present?
The minutes reflect that Commissioner Foley is attending. Greetings.
Sorry I'm late.
All right, item five on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on March 17th, 2021. Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Gorham?
Second, Jaeger.
Jaeger, second, any discussion? All right, with that, Director Chansky, could we do roll call, please?
Calruth.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Gorham.
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes. Alrighty. All right, we're down to old business, we have a comprehensive plan amendment, public hearing. Director Chansky, could you set us up for that, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So on January 20th, this is the Planning Commission's regular meeting in January. The Commission did instruct staff to begin the county and surrounding municipalities, as well as public review periods for the comprehensive plan amendment. Again, as a reminder, this is the amendment to include the new future land use map into the comprehensive plan and then update some, a few sections, places in the land use section that directly correlate with the future land use map. The 60-day, the county and surrounding municipalities were given 60 days for review. That review period has closed, we received no comments. The 30-day public review period, that has also concluded and as of this, as of this evening, we have received no comments. At this time, Mr. Chair, I would recommend first, holding the public reading per state statute for this amendment and then upon conducting the public hearing, consider a vote to recommend adoption of the comprehensive plan amendment to the city council.
Thank you. Director Chansky, and this point of order again, for the minutes reflect that Commissioner Woodward is in attendance. All right, any questions for staff before we move forward to public reading? Hearing none. Do we need to do the reading or may we?
There's no reading, just, just a hearing.
Okay, just a public hearing then, so at this point in time then, I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:07 and receive public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this topic on our agenda? And we have people online, so the procedure for that is, if they wish to speak online, would be a keystroke. Is it to pound, pound something or other?
If they're on just through the general WebEx, the video, they could just unmute themselves. If they're on through the phone, it would be star three to raise your hand and then star six to unmute. It does not appear, we only have one person on, that's Mr. Tom Dean, he is through the WebEx. So if Mr. Dean wanted to speak on the comprehensive plan, he would only need to unmute.
Right. And for those in attendance also, if, if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to the comprehensive plan amendments that have been put out for public hearing, this would be the opportunity to speak. Going once. Twice. Okay, hearing no, no one wishing to speak to this, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:08. Bring that back. Any discussion from members on the changes to the, to the amendment? Hearing none, I would be looking for a motion to recommend adoption of the amendment and passing that forward to the city council.
So move.
Erickson, second?
Second, Jaeger.
Jaeger, second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, Director Chansky, can we go to roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Woodward?
Aye.
Calruth?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Gorham?
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes, that motion carries. Next steps on that?
Uh, next, Mr. Chair, that will, that will go to the city council for their consideration of adopting that amendment, that'll be through a resolution and that'll go before the plant, the city council during their next regular meeting on Monday, May 3rd.
Very good, thank you. All right, new business, we have before us our first order of new business is a variance request for a front yard setback for a suite of lots in Block 9 of Northtown subdivision. Director Chansky, could you set that up for us, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so Mr. Tom Dean, who's the owner of Three Deans LLC, which owns lots 24 through 40 on Block 9 of Northtown. He has requested a variance from Section 515-55-7B, which governs principal building setbacks in an R1A zone. He is requesting a reduced front yard setback from 30 feet to 25 feet for each of the 20 of the blocks, 24 through, of the lots, 24 through 40, due to significant type of topographical changes on these lots. As I mentioned, these lots are currently all zoned R1A. They are all currently undeveloped. I just wanted to point out that in the Northtown development, on average, since Mr. Dean has taken that over since 2017, on average, 17 new home builds have been, have been permitted and built each year from 2017 to 2020, totaling 72 homes. And so far in 2021, the community development department has issued five new building permits in the Northtown development. Per 515-55-7B, as I said before, it needs to be 30-foot setback. Again, he's asking for reduced for five feet. 515-7-2 discusses the criteria for a variance. This also comes directly from also state statute. There are a couple of situations that must be met, criteria, to be considered for a variance. The first is that when the, the request of variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. I do believe that this is, as the purpose of the R1A is to allow areas of low-density, single-family detached dwellings and to preserve the quiet, single-family neighborhoods free from other uses except from those that are compatible with residential such districts. And again, this is a single-family development and will continue to be so. Also, it's when variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff also believes that that is true. Goal one of the Chapter 3 is land use chapter of the comprehensive plan, states to provide a diverse mix of housing choices for all stages of life, income ranges and ownership slash rental preferences. There are a number of policies under that goal, including policy one, complement Brainerd's entry level and affordable housing options by encouraging other move-up, mid-to-upper-end market rate housing options, which this does do. Policy two states expand homeownership and rental opportunities to rehabilitation, new construction. Again, these lots will be used to build new construction. And then policy five, under goal two, which I didn't list, goal two, but states to ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents. And then again, this is just continuing to expand our, expand our housing supply here in Brainerd. Then in subdivision 3B and subdivision 4 of 515-7-2, this lists a few more criteria, states that the variances may be granted. If the property owner possesses the use, proposes the use of properties of reasonable better, not permitted by the ordinance. It's an R1A, single-family, he's proposing single-family. He's just, again, just requesting it to be closer to that property line due to the fact that there is significant topographical changes. Which is the next part, the plight of the law, landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. And it's lots 24 through 40 on Block 9, they do experience a significant typographical change from approximately 20 feet, from their, a difference of 20 feet from the rear line, front line to the rear line. And the variance granted will not alter the essential character of locality. Again, these are currently undeveloped and when they are developed, they will be single-family homes, which meets, which matches the rest of the development. No parties came forward in the, in the 10 days that this was noticed with any concerns. And staff, we are recommending approval of this variance, as we do believe it meets the criteria. I'll hand that over back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Chansky, any questions or clarification from staff before we move to public hearing? Hearing none, public hearing. Yep, yes.
We are, we are under the understanding that to oppose any of this, we have to come to this meeting.
Yep, that's what we're about to do with the public hearing.
Very moment, my friend. So we will open the public hearing at 13. And at this point in time, we've asked the applicant, Mr. Ben, this is on, Mr. Dean is on the line, I think, right?
Yeah, I'm, he's here. But I'm here.
If you could introduce yourself, please, Mr. Dean, and, and maybe tell us about your variance request.
Sure, so, so, yeah, Tom Dean is my name, I'm the, I own Three Deans development there, but I also own Thomas Allen Homes, so we're the builder of the homes there. And, and what we have is, on these lots on Viking, there's a, there's, there's two things I'm doing here, I'm replating. First, because there's a big amount in the back, and I would just like all the lots larger. We'll still make it drainage utilities meant over the back, so it won't change the net, you know, net feel of the lot, everything, drainage will work just, just the same. But the, more of the variance I'm asking to move the home slides to get closer to the street is, there's a tremendous amount of slope in the grade there. If you see all these little black lines through the grading plan, each of those reflect two feet of elevation. So off the street, we have roughly, some of the lots 20 feet of fall. And imagine if you have a basement, you know, in a deeper basement, you're probably making up tent feet of that. Maybe, maybe the house is a little bit lower from the street. There's still, there's no way to make up all that grade difference. So we'll have to put some type of retaining wall or a bucket in the back. But what I was hoping to do is if we move this, the closer we get the houses to the street, the less issue it has with that backyard slope. And, and really, it just gives homeowner a better rear yard once they're in.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there any, anyone that wishes to speak on this application or this variance application?
You can go either to that mic or that mic.
And if you would, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Michael Brodeur. My address is 9338 Viking Street in Brainerd. I do have a petition here with a number of signatures who are opposing this five-foot variance for setback. And it all pertains to the uncertainty of the type of homes that Tom is predicting to build there. So we live in the Spruce Reserve, it's a HOA. So directly across the street from us now is the area that we're talking about. So in, in our HOA, we're not allowed to have trailers or cars or anything sitting outside on our property for more than 72 hours. So this area across from Viking is not going to be in the HOA, it'll be single-family homes, which they will be allowed to have their fish houses, their trailers, or cars, whatever, sitting there for extended periods of time. Which, if the homes are five feet closer to the road, this is undesirable for us because it's going to be eyesore the further it comes closer and closer to us. And also, we'd like to see only one-level homes there, but the younger families are building two-story homes. So now this is going to be another 10, 20 feet taller than our homes. So that is our concern at this time, is the type of homes. And not being in the HOA, people are going to be allowed to have their trailers or whatever sitting out in front, which is going to be closer to our home. Which takes away from our property, we feel. So that's our opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Brodeur.
Should I turn this in to someone?
You may present it to staff.
Question for Mr. Brodeur.
Yep. Mr. Brodeur, we have some questions for you.
Quick question before you sit down, how many names do you have on your petition?
I can give you an answer.
Okay.
All right.
It appears to be seven, so it's on about right?
Sure. Yep.
Alrighty, any other questions for Mr. Brodeur? Thank you, Mr. Brodeur, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this variance request? Right, hearing none. Are there questions for the applicant that folks would like to, members of the commission would like to ask?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
All right, Mr. Gorham.
Uh, Mr. Dean, do you have a response to the concerns that are put forth by Mr. Brodeur?
Uh, I, I, I do. And so I would, I guess I would first tell you that the type of homes we, we're going to build. There may, there may be one-level homes, but we do have a plan, or we do have, our, our plan is to come up with a new house plan, that's a two-story, something that isn't built-in project currently. So there will be a combination of one levels and two stories there. And I, I really, I mean, young families are in need, so I don't know how I can change that. Now, for the concern of the driveway, I would be willing to put covenant on these 16, 17 lots that would not allow outside parking in the driveway. But, you know, that would be the only solution that I would have. Otherwise, I guess, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how else I could satisfy it.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Dean, do you have any interest in the, any interested parties who are looking forward to your proposed plat? Or do you have any purchase agreements, you think, or how's the interest been on the, for these lots?
The, we've, we've been holding to the end because these, you know, these were wooden lots, we thought they'd be, you know, their walkout should be the nicest, but also we knew we'd have this expense of grading and get them buildable. So they haven't sat because of not a demand, and then right now, the market, the demand is, is phenomenal. I would bet, if I said I could build them all by the end of the year, we could sell them all. It's just right now, our, our home building end, we're out to December. So, so I do not have, I have two interested parties, but they're actually not out of the new plans, they're lots, just to jake for this. We haven't offered any of these lots yet.
Mr. Brodeur.
Yes, would there be a possibility of putting these lots into the Spruce Reserve? So that the covenants would follow right through with them? I know, I know, younger families aren't really interested in being an HOA, but I don't know what the dynamics there would be.
So that question is directed to
Tom.
Mr. Dean. The question, if you did not hear it, was, would there be an option to include these lots in the Spruce Reserve HOA? Did I get that correct, Mr. Brodeur?
That's correct.
I, I would say their cost-effectiveness is going to be much more difficult for us to sell because they're all going to have full basements, so for Mr. Brodeur's neighborhood, every house is going to be $50,000 mark. And so that's where I just think for the families, I prefer not to put it in. I think with the lots, it just becomes more for getting guys, you know, our contractors in to come cut the grass. So I'd be fine with the, I'd be fine with covenant on no parking, but I prefer not to put them in the Spruce Reserve.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Dean and Mr. Brodeur. Other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, please.
Jaeger.
Mr. Dean, I have just a couple of quick questions I want to clarify. I'd also like to clarify for everyone in the room that the, the topography, the lines are, are at one foot, not two feet, as was mentioned. As a condition of, or as, as a part of this variance, I understand, I see that you're asking for a reduction of setback on lots 24 through 40. As I'm looking at the topography of this plat, I can see that the topography, the topography tremendously affects Lot 24 versus, say, Lot 30. So where I'm going with this is, maybe you can shed a little light on how the, the five feet will help Lot 24 the same as it will help Lot 30 with that topography happening roughly midway through the lot.
Well, I think the, although 24 is, is going to be the worst, you know, 25, and as you work your way down to 40, they become less. But I think there's still enough topography issues to affect it. I would say you're probably looking somewhere at, you know, probably 34, 35, or it doesn't get, you know, it does flatten some in the, in the rear. You know, and it just did a blanket cross it. But if you take like 37, 38, 39, 40, they're, they're definitely not, not, not the same lot as 24.
Understood, so my, my last question is, the impetus for this request is, is based primarily on the financial impact to construction methodology, correct?
That is one, yes. But two, even if I, the construction isn't as great, probably, as we could put a retaining wall in, but after that, and, and trying to maintain the trees, it's still, it's a two-part. So that would be one, the second is, there's still just a steep slope in the backyard. So we're trying to, we're trying to give a larger backyard that's somewhat flat as much as possible, so.
Understood, thank you, no other que, I have no other questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Other questions from the commission? All right, well, hearing none, I think at this point, we'll close the public hearing at 6:26 and bring that back to the table for discussion, discussion from commissioners.
I have a question for staff. David, I had a question about whether the Lot 40 is partially within the Shoreland Gilbert Lake and just wanting to know whether the, the slope there behind that lot qualifies as a bluff in the Shoreland area.
I can look, and I can answer that, Mr. Chair. So I did get that, your, your question, was able to run a quick calculation. Two things, I don't believe that it does count as a bluff. Two reasons, one is talking about the grade over, over a distance of 50 feet or more, has to be over 18% in this situation, based on my calculation from the rear of that lot, even to the most, the deepest part behind it into Outlet C, should this preliminary plat, which the next part go through. It's less than 17% based off my calculation. Also, the, the Shoreland ordinance speaks about the runoff from the topography change, the hill, the bluff, going into, directly into the body of water. In this situation, it goes down into a hole and then it, and then it comes right back up on the, on the other side. It's pretty much a hole there. So it doesn't run into Gilbert Lake, which is the actual shoreline, nor does it run directly into the Mississippi River. For those two reasons, I don't believe that it counts as a bluff.
Thank you. Other questions or other comments on the variance request? I have a question for Mr. Dean. Who would enforce the covenants? If you were to apply the covenants on, on the, on these lots?
The covenances are usually, usually difficult, it's usually the, the neighbors, you know, that say, hey, here's the covenances. But, but they are harder, they are harder to, you know, most of people, you just hope they, they follow through. Now, the city, I mean, myself first could, you know, would write a letter saying, hey, the covenants, and, and there is, there is some more meat to get them to not park, but it's, it's, it's not like the, you know, we're going to call the police and they're going to get arrested, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, David, you have a, a comment or insight on that?
Yeah, I have a comment on that, to what Mr. Dean was talking about, the covenants, or even in situations where there are HOA covenants. Those go on beyond, above and beyond the city's ordinance. Again, HOA can be more restrictive, not less. However, it's not, doesn't fall under the city's purview from enforcement. In an HOA situation, that would fall under the HOA board or their association, would be the enforcing of anything that's above and beyond the city's requirements. So in this situation with those covenants, if there were a problem, I don't believe the city would really have a situation to, to enforce it, as long as it's, it's meeting the city ordinance. And likely would be if there was a situation, it'd be kind of a neighbor-to-neighbor thing and if it really came down to it, would have to probably be solved in civil court.
I, I think many times, you know, let's just say the neighbors, you know, this, this, this vehicle's sitting here, the HOA could get together, they could pull it out, they could pull the trailer out. Usually, that isn't neighborly. But if they do do it, and then ultimately, there is, I think, an HOA. But if they do do it, and then ultimately, there is, I think, on the HOA, they can assess some liens for cost. If there was coin and the guy wouldn't pay for it, something against the taxes. But it, it isn't as simple as a city enforceable ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Goram.
And this is a question for Mr. Dean. So the residents who are on the non-covenant side, or the non-HOA side, you're, you're saying the HOA could get together and, you know, remove a vehicle. But the houses on the other side of Viking won't be in the HOA. So I'm, I'm kind of confused how the enforcement would happen.
We'd, we'd have to actually, we'd actually have to form a new HOA just for those homes on the other side. So it would be that, the HOA from the people across the street are the ones that have concern, you know, so. And, and part of the problem of, of not building, say, similar houses across the street that are in Spruce Reserve, those are a lot longer or deeper out. So the deeper the house is, deeper goes into lot, more issue we have to deal with the grade. Reason we want to come in with small two-stories, that foundation size is a little bit smaller because you stack square footage on top of each other. So we can build a wider, narrower house to kind of help with this, this slope.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Dirk Chansky, what, what elements do we have in the existing ordinance that would be relevant to the concerns that Mr. Bedore and the petitioners have communicated here about the parking of vehicles and such like that? RVs, I think, was the specific.
So again, not knowing all the specifics of the Spruce Reserve HOA covenants, it does sound like, having familiar with some other additional covenants, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, your, or your covenants say you can't have something parked in the driveway outside for more than 72 hours, correct? And that's on the driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
The city, obviously, if it's in your driveway parked, the city's ordinance regarding off-street parking in the front or side yards is that it has to be vehicles, including RVs, half in trailers, have to be parked on an improved surface. And in the front and side yards, that includes concrete, asphalt, brick and pavers, yeah, brick or pavers. So as long as they're parked on one of those surfaces, they're legal. And they can be parked there for as long as they want. They still have to be operable for the city's ordinance, and they have to be, have current registration for the city's ordinance. But otherwise, if they meet those criteria, they can stay there. They can be parked outside permanently. Otherwise, the enforcement we would have would be if it's something that's not parked on an improved surface, if it's not in operable condition, or if it's not, it doesn't have current registration. Then we would take administrative, we go across through our code enforcement process to notify them. And then if there was no compliance, go through our administrative citation process. Then again, that's only if those criteria aren't met. Obviously, you can, from what I understand, the Spruce Reserve covenants are more restrictive than the city, and we only can do what the city ordinance says.
Thank you, Dirk Chansky. Other questions or other comments?
Mr. Chair, I, looking at the topography of most of those lots, I would just like to comment that I think the residents purchasing those lots and purchasing the homes may be better served with an extra five feet of front yard rather than an extra five feet of slope in the backyard.
Quite just to play off Teresa's question, but they're not going to lose five feet in the back necessarily. Still going to have five feet.
Right, but they would gain five feet if we, if the variance is not granted. They would gain five feet of usable yard in the front of the home.
I see.
So they wouldn't be kicking as many balls in the street.
Safety.
Other questions or the comments or observations before we bring this?
Mr. Chair, I just would add that it, it seems that if we're going to, that to do this, Mr. Dean has offered, you know, to make, to offer some things to the neighbors across the street in the HOA. But for us to, you know, pass something with a, with conditions, we would have, that would have to be done before, wouldn't it? I don't know if we can really do it on a, informally tonight, or maybe we can. But that'd be my question, can we really move ahead with, without something in place?
Without, without?
Without just a verbal, sure, I'll take care of it.
Without seeing what those covenants are? Or could we, could we ask those to be vetted with staff and, and, and come back either to this body or simply empower staff to, to work the details out?
These are options, I don't know. I'd like to hear other viewpoints on it.
Mr. Chair, if I may. The one concern I will have is affected the 60-day rule per state statute. Is that the, the municipality must make a decision on an application within 60 days of it being submitted. Otherwise, essentially, the request is granted. So my concern of essentially, potentially saying, bring this back in May, is by the time the planning commission reviewed again in May, and by the time it goes to the plant, the city council in June, the 60-day period will have lapsed. And therefore, then Mr. Dean's request would be granted unconditionally.
So that? So that's an argument to, to not bring it back here, but to empower staff to be able to work out the details.
I would agree.
Is what I'm hearing.
But I do other developments, and I sure could get a copy of a, a covenance with a, no parking, you know, provide that for the city to review.
I have a question, real quick, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dean, how long have you owned these, these lots?
I believe it was in 2015.
Thank you.
Reading body language, I think, Mr. Goram.
I'm waiting to yes, but I'm waiting to how do we get to yes here? And I, I'm not sure how we do this because we have a few moving parts here, right? So whatever we craft has to be, you have to be somewhat careful here in how we, in how we do this.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll just kind of let everyone know where I'm at kind of on this. My issue with this is the blanket five-foot from lots 24 all the way through 40. If you look at the topography, and I look at lot 24, I could easily see, okay, there is an argument here that this house should sit closer. But if I look at lot 31, for instance, that's dramatically different topography affecting construction methodology. So my issue with this is, is not so much five feet on one lot versus the other, but it's, it's more of per lot, per lot. And it almost feels like it should be a case-by-case basis for me on a setback issue. I'm also less inclined to think that, that there's a tangible hardship here on setback when these lots were only purchased a few years ago by a person who knows construction methodology with the intent of potentially developing these lots, knowing what the current setbacks were. Current setbacks have not changed. So my leaning here is that while I'm open to potentially talking about altering a road setback on some of the lots, I'm less inclined on other lots. So my leaning, because this is a all-or-none type request, is, my leaning at this point is, is no. And then take these on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Chair.
If I can, Mr. Chansky, but you're going to say no, aren't you?
I'm, I'm going to say that actually you, you could.
Okay.
Say, these, well, granted on these lots, but not these lots.
Understood.
If I can interrupt, and I, I would be okay, to be honest with you, I didn't really think it'd be a neighborhood problem on five feet. My air for not checking, so I'm not, if it, if it meant the lots further down. I was just trying to go uniform the rest of the way. But to be honest with you, I don't think anyone from the streets can even notice five feet of difference. But if we could at least cover some of those really poor lots, would be, you know, you know, greatly increasing.
So, Mr. Jaeger, I think you've opened up a, an avenue here that might give us some light. I wonder if we might be able to ask Mr. Dean to, to highlight which of these, if we were to reduce this down, which of these would be essential for you to have that five-foot variance?
Yeah, I'm looking, I can't, I'm not really pulling up the, I'm, I'm in my computer trying to pull up the plat so I can get a larger. Here. Trying to figure out how far down we got to go. I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay.
I'm struggling to find it. I actually had a breakdown, we're at cross-sections on all two.
Mr. Chair, in the interim. I guess I see the two issues is, one, the setback, the five-foot setback, and whether we do all the setbacks or just some of them. Regardless, it doesn't address the HOA's concern of vehicle storage and trailers and things. So I guess that's, I want to frame that, that's kind of the two issues. One, the setback, one B, if we do just some of the lots with the setback. But then there's the, the issue still remains of the HOA's concerns. And then I guess the secondary thing is just determining if Mr. Dean is, is willing to make any accommodations on that. I guess I'd be fine either way on the, I don't see an issue. I'll take your more professional experience on the setback, if, if we want to select certain ones. I guess I'm inclined to approve it if there's a way to, if Mr. Dean's willing to make some accommodations on the parking. I think that'd be a, an agreeable. Will he go far enough? Probably not as far as you'd like, but maybe there's a compromise to be made there. And I don't, I, I'd be comfortable allowing staff to work that out. Perhaps David has some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Maybe my impression that the, the platted lots that remain that don't require a variance would be able to, to kind of operate as they've been platted. David, do you have?
Mr. Chair, I just, I just wanted to just point out one thing that obviously may be obvious, but I pointed out, is that say the commission tonight were to, were to recommend denial of all of them, and Mr. Dean were to just go ahead and, and build as-is, there's, he has no requirement to do the covenants. We can't come back and just say, okay, we'll throw these covenants on there because there's no unconditional anything. So he could build today with 30-foot setbacks, no parking restrictions beyond the ordinance. So that, I just wanted to throw that out there. There's nothing stopping Mr. Dean from just building as-is, and then there's no parking restrictions. Another concern, just, just, I just thought I'd throw this out there too, is if the commission does decide go the route of approve some lots, deny other lots, is, I would recommend against just saying, okay, then on the lots that we're approving, there's a covenant. The only reason being, I think it could get confusing for future buyers that may be wanting picking lots. And then also when it's, you know, these two lots have a covenant, the rest of the lots don't. Again, I think there's going to be, there, I just feel like there's going to be issues in the future. Maybe between neighbors, neighbors then calling the city, and the city going, well, I have nothing to really do with that. Or one neighbor can't park their car out for more than 72 hours, but the neighbor next door can park it out for as long as they want. Or even the neighbor down the street can park it. So, you know, I already know, we already have that, we're going to have, we're going to have that in this situation from the neighbors across the street. So I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not really sure if I can guide the commission on a good way to address these concerns. I guess it's really kind of unfortunately up to the commission, how do you want to go about, go about this path? I think I'd recommend is, if you're going to do it, just do it across all lots. I do also identify, Mr., I, I recognize Commissioner Jaeger's concern of, well, some of these lots don't seem to need a five, the additional five-foot setback, but I also recognize Mr. Dean's point of that uniformity. When you look across the rest of the Northtown development, all the properties pretty much have are uniform when it comes to setback. So this would be the only area in that entire development that would not be uniform across the setback. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Mr. Foley?
My, my thinking is, I, I feel like, you know, trying to impose, impose some covenants as a bargaining chip for a variance isn't necessarily fair, I don't think. I think, I think we got to deal with if he's, if there's a hardship or not. I think for the housing type that he's proposing to build and the relative demand for it, and they seem to be units that we've, we've talked more about, we like, we would like to see built for a certain type of market. That, that, that's looking for maybe a first-time home or, or something. And, and, and since these aren't going to be big walkout-type houses, I think there maybe is an argument for a hardship for the setback, certainly on some of the lots, maybe not all. But I guess I'm, I'm generally in favor, favor of it myself.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Mr. Dean, have you had a chance to, to think and address the question regarding any particular lots?
I apologize, I still haven't found that. I can't, I, I don't know where that gets, where it went. But, but anyhow, just listening to the conversation, I think, I guess if it's, it's an issue, I guess I would just say, I can, I can see the point of the policing issue. Maybe I'm going to, I just, I guess I was, I do put a lot of concern into what we do. And I just was thinking it would give a backyard that's more useful. But I guess I didn't really think about the, the concern of five feet closer. But if it means we just got to go at 30 feet, whatever I think it should be to make the rest of this way down be consistent. So either stick with the 25-foot variance, or just go to 30, everybody can park in the, in the driveway the same as the city ordinance. I mean, I think, I remember one I had before on the, I got all these single slopes, but I think you got to really go down about lot 35, 36 before it really, slope, slope really changes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean. So at this point, any further questions or discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Chansky. When did the clock start on the 60 days? What's the date?
Let me see the date on Mr. Dean's application here. His application was filed dated 4/7, so 60 days. Give me just a second.
7?
From, something like that.
Okay, 6.
And it would be Sunday, June 6th, and the city council meets on Monday, June 7th.
Could we, maybe this is unprecedented, could we ask Mr. Dean to let the clock run another 10 days so the process? It seems like we have a messy situation. I just don't see a, a neat way of solving this here. Could we, could, could we ask Mr., Mr. Dean if we could have another?
That's, that's unfortunate, that would be a question I would have to give to the city attorney, I don't know. You know, he could, he, my, I guess my concern is probably what the city attorney would say, is Mr. Dean could say yes today and no tomorrow. It really is, is the, probably the issue with the 60-day rule.
So.
Mr. Chair, real quick.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Please, Mr. Dean.
I looked at the grades here, and there is no doubt that you're right. I would say 21 even, but we're at 24. So 24, 25, there's a few lots that I'm not extending out the back, so I didn't lap that. I'm going to have to have the expense of fixing the grade anyhow. But I'd say 24 to, to probably 30 would be the ones. But I guess if it was going to But I guess if it was gonna hold up a while longer, the market, I gotta get construction in. I would say either if you're willing to eliminate a few of the, and, and, and offer a variance on the couple of the really poor ones, if it's not, and delaying, I'd say I just go at the thirty feet. Take, you know, uh, you know, the expenses and, the expense isn't really that great. It was more about just trying to get a finished backyard a little bit nicer. So it's not like, uh, tens of thousands of dollars to, to move it back thirty feet. I just thought, end of the day, eat a lot a little bit nicer, nicer, flat spot, more level spot. So anyhow, um, so I guess I would just say, I'm good with the city whichever way they think they need to go. Um, I'm not looking here to make enemies with the neighbors, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Jaeger.
Real quickly, just, uh, don't wanna beat it up. Um, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Foley's point of that, the, the conversation of setback and, uh, hypotheticals on the lot are, to me, not, not, not connected. And I see that for a couple of different reasons, number one, it's not a part of this application. And number two is that the, the likelihood that, uh, any of these covenants or that is, the execution and the enforcement of that will take place between the homeowners across the street and Mr. Dean, who's, who, from what I can tell, is more than open in, in trying to be a good neighbor with us. So I really think that if we boil this down, we are really talking about the five-foot, uh, the, the five-foot setback here tonight. And, uh, that may help clear this up and may help a motion, uh, get trickled out of here, but, uh, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, I'm, uh, really encouraged by, uh, Mr. Dean, uh, ability to, or, uh, what he said about, uh, trying to be a good neighbor, and the conversation has come out of this. So that's really what you can hope for in an open forum meeting of the city, so, and thanks for people for showing up and, and voicing their concerns as well. So it sounds like we got a lot of good neighbors here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Well, at this point, I guess I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, a question.
Mr. Erickson.
Mr. Jaeger, if I could, I know you said you're done. What, um, what lots would you be comfortable giving the five feet on? Can we make kind of a list and, or are you?
I, I think that, just, I don't know the topography, and, and again, he bought the lots, I didn't. That's, that's the issue that I have, and I'm not sure if we can approve a variance conditionally lot by lot tonight, or is, or can we, can we not, can we do that? Dave, Mr. Chansky?
I think you, you can, I don't think it has to be all or nothing, again, you could say.
Taking, taking a guess at this is my, my concern here. But his, his list is probably pretty close to mine, twenty-four through thirty, something like that, seems, seems pretty tough, thirty-eight seems pretty tough, but, okay. But he also seems open to just meeting the setback, and I will say, the, the houses across the street meet the thirty, so if we're talking conformity from the road, both sides would be a thirty, hypothetically, if we just held it thirty.
All right, I am looking for a motion.
There's our chair.
Mr. Bedore, I recognize you.
I don't, I don't want the council to get hung up on the parking, because that's not the only issue. The other issue is that Tom does not have a home design done yet, what he's planning to build there. So it's not only the setback, it's also the height of the home, which, the closer to the road it gets, it obstructs my panoramic view of the woods or anything else, you know, so. It's also the type of home he wants to build, which is unknown at this time. So, that's, it's a two-part, it's a two-part thing for, for us across the street. It's not only the closeness of the parking, it's also the height of the home.
Thank you, Mr. Bedore, and the question before us is, is, is the placement of the structure on the lot.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Erickson.
A question for Mr. Chansky on that remark, the current city ordinance would address the height issue.
Thirty feet above grade in this area.
Mr. Chansky? Could we go forward with maybe, um, a, a, a motion to deny the variance with understanding that, um, a lot, you know, an application could come back for, for a lot when it's time to build?
Um, in this situation, uh, if it is, if there is a denial tonight, ordinance does state that a reapplication must wait six months unless waived by the city council. So, so they could, obviously, it could come back for re, you know, lot by lot, um, but it would have to be at least six months.
And that'd be.
Unless it's waived by the council.
A lot of application fees and.
And, yeah, then you'd be looking at seventeen separate variance applications, potentially.
What did you say, um, when the question was asked, if, if we could make a motion to approve for X, X amount of lots or certain lots?
You, you could.
We could, okay.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Erickson.
I guess I'm prepared with a motion, but I think, um, I agree that the negotiation between the developer and the, the HOA is, regardless of, if we were to handle that, that would be held, you know, between the two of them privately, so that really the only question in the application and with our discussion is regarding the five-foot setback, and if we should do them all, or if we should do some of them. I think the, the applicant deserves this to come to a motion and come to a vote, so, uh, I'd motion, as staff recommends, approval of the preliminary plat with no alterations or conditions.
That would just confirm we're talking about the variance, you said preliminary plat.
I'm sorry?
You mean variance, you might be on the wrong.
Okay, yeah, sorry, variance.
So we do have a, we do have a motion. And that motion is to approve.
As requested.
A five-foot variance to the setback for all lots.
That's correct.
Twenty-four to forty.
I'll second that motion.
Right, we have a second by Mr. Foley, is there discussion?
I guess my, Mr. Chair, my thought, the, the quick thought I have is that five feet doesn't seem like a whole lot to add to a backyard. And so, but, maybe five feet in a real sloped area is a lot, but it just doesn't seem, that's like five feet. It's, it just doesn't seem like such a, I don't know why we're talking about such a small chunk. And, you know, maybe the greater value is you go with the uniformity, maybe that's the greater value here, I'll just throw that out as an idea.
Other discussion?
I, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to add in that what we are talking about here is the uniformity and the setbacks, that's the issue that, that has been brought before planning and zoning. There are greater issues that go into forming a neighborhood that are not planning and zoning regulations, and it might benefit the developer and the HOA to have a meeting about whether the, whether it's more important to not assess a, an HOA fee on these lots, or whether it would create a better neighborhood if all of them were together. But the neighborhood issue is not necessarily what is our planning and zoning commitment tonight. So, I just wanted to bring that to the developer and the HOA, that this is something that could create a lasting benefit to the neighborhood to have some cohesiveness if they work together on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Chansky, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Woodward.
I.
Calrus.
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Jaeger?
No.
Erickson?
Yes.
Gorum?
I'll, I'll say no, I, I just don't get five feet.
And Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the vote is five to two in favor.
All right, variance is approved for city council, next steps, please, Mr. Chansky.
Yep, this variance will go before the city council during the regular meeting on May third.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dean. Our next step, uh, we have a couple of preliminary plat issues that are related, so we will continue with, um, North Town, um, item B here under new business, uh, David, could you, uh, set that up for us, please?
Yep, Mr. Chair, first, uh, gives the commissioner Gorum have a question before he could go?
No, I, I, I had a question, but it was answered.
Okay. Um, definitely, Mr. Chair, so this is again relating to the same lots we were just discussing, lots twenty through forty, block nine, also inclusive of Outlet C in the North Town addition. Mr. Dean has submitted a request, uh, for preliminary plat, um, to consolidate lot, Outlet C into lots twenty-four through forty, as you can see in your packet on the preliminary lot. I'm just making Outlet C a part of each individual lot. Again, these lots are all zoned R1A, and the Outlet is also zoned R1A. Currently, Outlet C doesn't really serve any, does not serve as any, any dedicated easement or specifically for stormwater retention, wasn't designed for that. Does it probably serve some kind of, yes, but it wasn't specifically designed as a storm water retention device. Outlet C is approximately five-point-two-four acres in size. As stated before, uh, lots twenty-four through forty on block nine do have experience, uh, significant topography change. And then once, with the, when you encounter Outlet C, and there's a further topography change. Um, if you look at from the rear lot lines of lots twenty-four through forty on block nine, to that of Outlet C, which kind of is a hole, it, it goes down and then comes back up on the other side. It's, it's ano, another additional change of a, between eighteen and twenty-six feet. So if you go really from the front property lines of those lots to the lowest point of Outlet C, you're somewhere between about thirty-six and forty-eight foot change. Um, we got all utilities, including water, sewer, and electric are already in place. Uh, there'll be no changes to those with this requested plat change. There should be no increased stormwater impacts, um, from this plat change. From a staff's perspective, um, there is also a benefit here. For property tax pay year 2021, Outlet C was an assessed, had an assessment of six-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, uh, that's a, that's the total tax. Um, actually, I say that, um, and then twenty, lots twenty-four through forty, each had an assessment roughly around two-hundred dollars. It is our opinion that there is a benefit of replating these lots to include Outlet C. As the inclusion of Outlet C, um, should also increase the taxable values of lots twenty-four through forty at a greater rate than if they, uh, if everything stayed as it currently is. Again, city staff, we had not received, um, any comments or concerns about this request, um, prior to this meeting. And we do, are recommending approval of the preliminary plat with no alterations or conditions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chansky, um, point of clarification, is this a, um, a public hearing item, or is this a procedural, um, item?
This is a public hearing item, Mr. Chair, so hold the public hearing, um, then, then you will, as the preliminary plat, you consider the plat, um, in this situation, you can recommend any changes that you might feel are necessary. Uh, then you'll vote to recommend, um, either just approving it as presented, or with any recommended changes. Then it'll go to the city council, they will look at it, um, and then make their own vote, whether or not to approve the preliminary plat. And then it'll come back to the planning commission likely next month for the final plat, so this is a, kind of a two-part process. And the final plat will just be, uh, to show that all the, any conditions that the commission did place on it, or recommendations that the commission and the council agreed upon, um, were taken account in, into the plat prior to its approval, and then recording with, uh, Crow Wing County.
Thank you, Director Chansky, any, uh, questions of clarification for staff before we move to public hearing? Hearing none, open public hearing at seven oh six. And we'll receive any questions or comments or testimony on this. Perhaps we can start with, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Dean, uh, could you speak to your request here for a modification of the plat to, um, apportion Outlet C to the, to the other planted lots?
All right, yes, so, um, this property was planted by the time I, when I bought it, purchased it, so I bought all the lots, um, as existing. I'm not really sure, I still could never figure out why that Outlet C existed. I don't know why, if the developer had something else in plan for it, but to me, it just seems like, it, it, it's not buildable, it doesn't do anything itself. So, um, what I'd like, I think by just adding a lot to that, value to everybody's lots, because they're deeper. I do, um, and I am reviewing everything, I did forget to include this. But my intentions are, so everywhere where there's Lot C or Outlet C, that would remain in the conservation area, so that means, lest the trees get diseased, each homeowner couldn't cut all those trees down, it's fully wooded, you know? Um, I think that's part of the beauty of it, so we put a conservation area over the trees. Um, it's really just utilities meant, so, nobody could cut the trees and go back there and build in it anyhow. So it just seems to be a, a natural conservation area over it. But to me, it's otherwise useless land, which now everybody else can, you know, all these lots can, can enjoy a big lot, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this application? All right, questions from, uh, from, uh, commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Foley.
So, Mr. Dean, it appears as if the existing lots now abutting Outlet C would already have a ten-foot drainage and utility easement in place along the rear. Are, are you planning on vacating that or leaving that in place?
Uh, I think just in here, I don't think we ask for any vacation, we just figured to leave it.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, I have to be honest with the measurements, um, I forgot to talk to Jared on that. My assumption, we never talked about eliminating him, so, yeah, it looks like he has.
Looks like you'll be rededicating another ten feet on the rear of Outlet C and five feet along the interior, proposed interior lines, but you would still have a, uh, ten-foot drainage and utility easement running through the middle of the lots?
Yeah, I, I actually think the entire piece, the whole Outlet C needs to be a drainage utility easement.
Okay, well, you could cer, you could certainly do that.
Yes, I, I, that, that's all I can figure that was put in there for drainage utility. We'd have a conservation easement over, so if I can't, um, if that isn't clear, um, I would, I would make that whole Outlet C area a drainage utility easement.
Yeah, because of.
That's my intentions.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be done on the final plat.
Yep.
With more than just the detail, probably, um, maybe some dimensions around some of the irregular areas.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Dean in Outlet C. Have you, have there been trees removed or anything, uh, done with Lot C, or is that just Lot C, Outlet C been untouched so far?
It's been untouched so far, at least by me. And it seems like it sits real low, you know, there's certain areas in town, maybe some trees have been blown over with the storms in years, but these trees all seem to be standing fine, so. You know, the, the bottom of Outlet C in many places is probably thirty feet lower than the street.
Mr. Chair.
Foley.
David, so did the city engineer look at the old civil plans for this and confirm that wasn't a ponding area?
Yes, he did, um, and so obviously there is that utility in there. Um, but what he confirmed is that the outlot itself was not necessarily designed to be a stormwater pond. Um, as Mr. Dean pointed out, yes, there's that easement in there, maybe that's why the Outlet C was there, but he did confirm that, no. But he did confirm that, no, this outlot does not itself, is not a stormwater pond or intended to be. And he had no concerns with this.
Mr. Dean, if you could elaborate a bit on your thinking about making this a conservation area, and I thought I heard conservation easement. Can you tell me a little bit more about what your thoughts are there and the mechanism for how you would intend to dedicate that?
So it's filed after the plat in a separate document, and he really knew it was. And, and it would basically just state that there's no, the only conservation we'd have in there could be a tree conservation. So somebody could walk through their yard, but they would not be, cut any trees down unless they can prove they're diseased or dead. I've done that in quite a few other projects.
As, as a conservation easement, is that what you're describing?
Yes. And it's really a concert, it's, you could just say it's about a tree preservation. But they call it when you file it a conservation easement.
Right. So it, it would be your intention, I'm looking at the, the current plat that's being displayed here. So you would have each, each lot's property lines would extend into this conservation easement area. But the, the original boundary of Outlot C is what you would dedicate into some sort of a conservation easement and record that on, at the courthouse, is that?
That, that is correct, yes. So it would mean, let's just say you live in, you know, you, you got lot thirty-five. You can go down, you know, your kids or anybody, owners can go and walk around in that. They could mow the grass in it if they chose to, that they could not if they don't want to. But the trees would all have to be intact, so somebody couldn't say, hey, I want, I want like trees, I'm gonna go cut all these down.
Right. So it, it's been my experience with conservation easements that the more property lines go through them, the more problems you have. Because the lines imply an ownership right. I'm, I'm wondering if, if you have considered retaining Outlot C in its entirety with a conservation easement and, and apportioning ownership rights to each of the parcels that adjoin it there, but not putting the lines through it. So you, you, you have sort of a mechanism for assessing the, and distributing the tax value of that. But at the same time, it has more of that shared interest amongst all the adjoining property. Have you thought about something along that line?
I haven't. I, I actually intentionally just thought, hey, everybody owns their piece, it's like their lot, you know? And so, you know, they can remain in it, so now we don't have, have to worry about maybe the neighbor running my yard and I don't.
Right.
I, I actually, and I guess to be honest with you, I don't have a lot of experience in, in those areas where I haven't made it. I'm thinking like three projects I've done. I've done like conservation easements over parks, but like, I've always done just a individual lot, just like this.
Yep.
And then somewhere we would have to post at that conservation easement, probably per lot line. We'd have to put up posts with a little sign saying conservation area. Otherwise, you know, somebody isn't gonna know where it's at. And you'll easily know the back half, but the front half were the lines between the lot line. And, and while the existing lot, yeah, that were, and then where we're adding the new pizza, call the old lot Lot C.
I thank you, Mr. Dean. Other questions?
Um, I'll, Mr. Dean, what I'll say is I, I have been, I was contacted by some residents on Riverside, on Riverside Avenue, on Riverside Street. And they had, they have Riverside Drive, they had some concerns about their backyard, and their backyard has changed. A lot of this is, you know, was set in motion, of course, twenty years ago with the plating of, of North Town. So they were very concerned about, for them, when they look at to the west and they look at Outlot C, they're, they, those are, those trees serve a purpose. It serves as a buffer, it helps define their yard, and it gives them a sense of privacy. And it also kind of helps separate two types of, different types of development. What you see along Riverside Drive, which is, you know, not that dense, house by house, but it's not on top of each other with North Town, which certainly serves a purpose, but is a denser type. So it faces me to hear that you talk about a conservation easement. It would have been nice maybe to have known about this a little earlier. I think maybe there would have been a little less anxiety with the residents on Riverside if they would have known that. But, but anyhow, that, that's good to hear. I think those trees do serve a purpose. And that's, that's, I think that will put some people at ease to hear that. And this might not be a question for you, Mr. Dean, but then the, the other question becomes, what are the consequences of somebody going out with a chainsaw and taking down the trees? Maybe that's a separate question, but anyhow, I probably asked you two, two different questions, but yes to the easement, but then I do have some concerns about what a, what a conservation easement would, how it really would be enforced. These questions.
Well, I think if you put, oh, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Dean, the questions that Commissioner Gorham posed.
Yeah, I believe that we can write it in the, the easement or the conservation easement that if you were to cut the trees, that they would be responsible to plant inch per inch of tree back in there. They'd have to have replanting. And, and when we close the house, we're definitely gonna present that document to each homeowner, you know, and make it clear. But usually in the states, the type of deed that you have if you did cut.
Thank you. Good to hear.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Erickson?
Do we have findings of fact for this item? Or will we be developing, okay. So can we add to that, the applicant's intent to do that, the conservation easement? Because it wasn't in the application. If we could note that in the findings of fact, that'd be good.
And I agree fully, my, my error, I think I filled out this application late at night working, so I do apologize.
You do that too.
Yeah, more than I wanted lately, but that's all good. There's nothing to do.
Other comments or questions?
One comment, I guess I'd have. The only thing I'd comment on is it is nice on a preliminary plat to see kind of the proposed improvements. And all these are just residential lots. But I, I think that, I think that the lot sizes will be nice. And overall, I think if you dedicate the Outlot C as all drainage and utility easement area on the plat, that would be really nice to see. Going even further with the conservation easement as a separate document, I think would be really respectful of the neighbors on the other side of the woods, and I think that'd be a nice touch as well. So thanks.
Yeah, no problem. You're welcome.
Other comments? Mr. Gorham, I think your, your nervousness about somebody whacking trees, you know, that, that I think is sort of a manifestation of the point I was making about extending lot lines out gives you a perception that that's my property and you have then, you have to then almost override that, that urge to go out there and, and do things to improve it in your mind while it has these other protected values that are governed by a, that's, I think, the benefit of having it, just leave it as an Outlot C as its entirety with no lot lines extending and almost divide the interest amongst the lots. It's a different, different approach, but then, then it has that shared benefit. Get the trespass on the easement, but that's not what we're, we're presented with here tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Foley.
I think what you're referring to would maybe be to change it from an outlot to a, a separate lot. It'd be Lot eighteen maybe, but it'd be a common, common area for, for lots one through seventeen.
To that effect, yeah. All right, well, I think with that, I think we're closing the public hearing at seven twenty-one. And we'll get back for discussion, any discussion on, on this at this point in time.
So a quick question, maybe Mr. Chansky can answer it. Are, are there utilities running through, parallel, pardon me, parallel through a Lot C at this point? Underground utilities or anything?
To my knowledge, all the utilities are in Viking Street.
I'm sorry?
To my knowledge, all the utilities are in Viking Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to confirm that, if you're walking, it, it's pretty old growth of woods. You know, it's not, it's definitely much older than twenty years, say from when the project was developed, so. I, I just had the assumption the whole time, there's, I didn't see it in the utility plans. It sure doesn't look like there's been anything ever through it.
Thank you.
All right, well, it seems to me, you know, the, the conservation easement concept is very appealing. You know, perhaps some, some guidance from the commission on elements we think would be important to include in that conservation easement would be useful conditions, things like no development, no filling or excavation, no cutting of trees, and I would be, I would want to be specific about a condition like that, maybe healthy, mature native trees. We wouldn't want to preclude the control of buckthorn and such like that, so. So being, being purposeful in, in allowing certain kinds of activities that might benefit the health of these mature trees that Mr. Dean had spoken to. So I, I feel like that would be an important addition here to, to help guide what, what would go into that conservation easement.
Can I, yeah, one comment?
Yes, sir.
And I agree with you. I guess my one question, does the city have a tree inspector?
We, we, we do actually, Assistant Planner James Cromick is the city's tree inspector.
I checked in the documentation that somebody would need, it would need to have, you know, any dead trees would need to have a pre-inspection by the city inspector before they could be cut. That could definitely be some verbiage added into that easement.
And typically, I think what you see is those that pose a threat to safety or, or private property. In other words, a dead tree has value unless it's likely to come down and, and kill you or wreck your house. So there are, there are some parameters, I think, to think about on the natural value of, of a dead tree. So thinking about how you condition or, or allow the removal of dead trees. So I guess I'd be at this point looking for a motion on this. That would be to approve the preliminary plat with the findings of fact and any conditions we want to add to that.
I don't have a motion yet, but I, I, my question is, what's the best way to wordsmith this, right? In, in, in terms of, Mr. Chan, I'll go to you, Mr. Chansky. Do you have any concerns about creating an additional lot, a lot eighteen or whatever the number we were talking about? Or what do you, do you have any concerns that we can, that we can have the conservation easement area be communally owned? Does that make any sense? You know, we, you know what I'm getting at. Instead of having the lines going through it, you leave it legally intact.
First, I'll say I don't know all the details about creating, now creating it, making it Lot Forty-One. And then how, how, how all that works, I don't know all the legalese to that, I'll be honest with that. You know, I understand Mr. Dean's idea of putting it through to a question of communal ownership. In this situation, how I, how I personally see it, Mr. Gorham, is even with the lines through it, there's a conservation easement over it. It kind of adds a neighbor to neighbor policing aspect where even though, you know, it might be your side, if you are violating the conserv, the conservation easement, I would also have the right, again, kind of how does this enforcement go? It's kind of that neighbor policing where I could then, these things are generally enforced in civil court. So then, you know, I could, I personally could take on some onus of, you know, either speaking to you as my neighbor or essentially filing something and says, you know, you have violated that easement. So I would say there is in a way some communal ownership in that aspect as you are all covered on that, under that same easement. My other, the other thing I, I, I think about, and yes, in this current situation, that outlot is owned by Mr. Dean. Obviously, at the, at the conclusion of, the goal, I believe, Mr. Dean's goal here is to build out this development and then it'll be done and let the powers of either the city or the HOAs kind of take it from there, and then he'll move on to his next project. There's a concern of now that his company, whoever, whoever owns Outlot C is kind of stuck with Outlot C in perpetuity, and what happens to it in the future? You know, again, it's unbuildable. What happens if, you know, in a way, Mr. Dean could allow this to go, just go tax forfeit if he chose to unload it? And then what would be the ramifications of this lot going tax forfeit? So from a, you know, from, from my perspective, just from that safety perspective, I think there is a benefit of chopping into each lot like this. And then again, I, I see it from another perspective of, again, looking at things like taxable value and the value of the land. I think actually, for each individual lot, it would create a greater value to each lot to include Outlot C versus its existing situation where the lots are their current size and then Outlot C just sits out there. I, I have a feeling that actually would increase the value of each of those lots to include Outlot C. That's from my perspective.
Thank you too. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do you, do you think that a one seventeenth interest in Outlot C would not kind of give you that same, same benefit? You know, it, it would be a taxable interest. So one seventeenth of the taxable value, whatever it was, is assigned to Lot Twenty-four, one seventeenth is.
And again, I would say, Mr. Jim, I'm not, I'm certainly sure how, how that works. And I, I understand, I understand concepts, it's been done. I will say I've seen it issues with, with the common interest that we've actually have dealt with in the time with the city where when one property owner or multiple essentially abandon their interest. Then you have, I have experienced lots where there's, there's one where it's a forty-acre lot and three quarters of it is tax forfeit and one quarter of it is still owned, but it's a common interest, and how does that work? Now these people are trying to unload it, but it's almost impossible for them to unload it because three quarters of it is now tax forfeit.
Mr. Foley?
Oh, I was just gonna kind of echo on that, Mr. Chair, that to do the common interest, I guess as this thing slowly builds out, there'd be only a couple people owning the interest at a time, and then there'd be figuring out if the developer was, was responsible for those shares until the lot sold, which I assume so, but there'd be a lot more declarations and covenants and I guess I'm fine with just the proposed seventeen lots with, with, with his intention to dedicate that all his drainage and utility easement, I think, is pretty reasonable. I think that assumes that there'll be no, you know, improvements in the easement area. And then to go a little farther than that, even if he's willing to do some kind of conservation on top of that would be just a nice bonus, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Other thoughts working us towards a motion?
Yeah, I have a question. You had mentioned some additional conditions regarding you can take down buckthorn and some invasive things. Who writes the conservation easements or who, who's that done by? And would we be even able to include something like that? Or would that, would, would any condition that we make about buckthorn, for example, be superseded by the conservation easement? Does anyone know?
So the conservation easement would be drafted by Mr. Dean? So the conservation easement would be drafted by Mr. Dean's attorneys.
Oh, okay.
Feet title owner.
Okay, so we could give some guidance in that.
Yeah, so I would, you know, my attorney would give a draft. I'm sure city staffs or whatever notes you would want to, they'd want to approve the draft. It isn't, I'm totally fine with the city approving race easement verbiage versus me just saying I'm gonna put it on and this is it, you know? So I would expect the city to review it.
And Mr. Chair?
Director Chansky.
And what could be done in this situation, again, because there's a two-part here, is you could request that that language come back with the final plat so you can review it.
And that would work within our timeline so that it goes to council, comes back to us for a second with that amended language, is that kind of how you're?
Yep, the idea would then be, you go to council with your recommendation that you want to see the language and then it would come back, you know, the recommendation, the idea would be, with the submittal of the final plat document, would be draft language for the conservation easement.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Are we any closer to a motion?
I think so. So do we, we have, do we have findings of fact right now on this? Do we, have we listed our findings of fact on this? I know.
Yep, I have a list and I've added, I have in my notes, Mr. Gorham, to add about the conservation easement as well as that utility easement.
Would it make, would it be of any interest to reference the comprehensive plan, which talks about green space? Just as an additional way to buttress the argument, right? We talked about green space in the comprehensive plan, as I remember. So I'd be willing to make a motion, I'll make a motion and it will be citing the findings of fact that we've discussed here, that'll be one part of it. The second part of it is that it'll be, we're assuming that there's going to be a conservation easement in the, in the final language that we approve in May, correct? Am I missing anything? I think I've got all the pieces lined up here. And that we would be doing it as platted and with the notion that the lots, that Outlot C would be divided by the property lines continuing. We get it? That's my motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Gorham supporting the findings of facts. We discussed conservation easement with language coming back to the commission in May and in plats or for Outlot C divided as shown on the, whatever that exhibit is, I don't have it in front of me, with the lines going through Outlot C, correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Okay, so there is the motion, do we have a second on that motion?
I will second. Jaeger.
Jaeger second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, then Director Chansky, can you take us to roll call, please?
Woodward?
Aye.
Calruss?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Gorham?
Yes.
And Duval?
Aye, that motion carries. Next steps, David, on that for Mr. Dean?
Yep, that's will go before the, this preliminary plat will go before the city council on May third for their review and the considerations of the conditions that the commission has put on it. They will then whether approve it and then Mr. Dean will be able to submit his application for final plat.
All right, thank you, David, and thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
All right, so we're on item seven C, another preliminary plat dealing with an outlot, but we have greased the skids on it now, baby, this one's gonna fly.
Promise?
Yeah, I can run ready to go.
So David, could you please set this one up for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric and Don Myra, they have submitted a request for the preliminary plat of Outlot B and the Brainerd Oaks addition to the Brainerd. The purpose of this preliminary plat is replat the Outlot B as lot thirty-two, block five, Brainerd Oaks. The purpose is to allow this outlot to be built with a single family dwelling on the property. A little bit background, the plat for Outlot B and really for Brainerd Oaks, that was filed with Croming coming December second, two thousand and three. Outlot B is zoned R1 in the single-family district, does not serve, again, does not serve as any kind of easement or for stormwater retention. This was verified by the city engineer. Approximately sixty-five by one forty-five, one fifty in size. Outlot B entered tax forfeiture in two thousand and eight when the Brainerd, the original developer for the Brainerd Oaks addition filed for bankruptcy. The lot was originally going to be a city park. At this time, it appears that the Parks Board, back at the time that this went into bankruptcy, abandoned the idea of putting a park in that location. Outlot B was purchased through tax forfeiture by the Myras on June ninth of two thousand and seventeen. For a little history, again, the Brainerd HRA has part of the redevelopment of Brainerd Oaks. When they bought the, all the tax forfeit properties, they did not purchase this part of the development because it was an outlot. At the time that it went into tax forfeiture, a period of time has elapsed before it can be put up for sale. When that happens, the county does reach out to the city and ask the city, does, are they okay with this going out for sale as non-conservancy or would you like to put it in conservancy? Staff reviewed it and recommended that it be put as non-conservancy and allowed for sale and the city council did approve that. There were no, there are no assessments as part of this property from the original development because it was an outlot. And all assessments for the other lots would have been waived. All utilities, water and sewer are available on this site. However, they are not sewer and water are not stubbed in because, again, this was an outlot and it will be the responsibility of the property owner for connecting sewer and water to the utilities located in the street. So it will be their responsibility to bring it to the lot, as confirmed by the city engineer. There should be no increased stormwater impacts, not, already not accounted for. It's like the stormwater retention that's already counted for in North Town, I'm not, I'm sorry, North Town, Brainerd Oaks. And Brainerd Oaks will be more than enough to handle any additional stormwater created by developing this lot. And again, for Outlot B, because it is now purchased, for two thousand and twenty-one, Myras are paying one hundred and fourteen dollars, fifty-six cents in taxes and we do believe, obviously, a development will definitely increase the taxable value than if it just sat as it is, which we do believe is in the city's best interests. The community development department did receive one call regarding this preliminary plat but had no concerns, so kind of wondering what was this all about? And at this time, we are recommending approval of other preliminary plat with no alterations or conditions. And I'll go to any questions from the commission, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David, any questions of clarification for staff before we move to public hearing?
I have one.
Foley.
Mr. Chair, I think, or Director Chansky, I think this would have to be a lot one, block one of a new plat rather than a lot thirty, thirty whatever, block five, just to make that clear. It would either be Brainerd Oak second addition or the, or the Eric Myra addition of Brainerd or something to that effect.
I like that.
And we can make sure that that would be counted for in the final.
Thank you, Mr. Foley, any other questions of clarification before we move to public hearing? All right, we're moving to public hearing at seven forty. Anyone wishing to speak at this point, we can go ahead and, are the applicants present? That would be, if you could state your name and your address, please, for the record?
Jessica Dewey, eight four two Holton Avenue. I don't really have objections, I'm just curious about this whole thing. It's such an unusual lot and I guess my, they're not here to clarify anything, I guess, but.
Yeah, the candidates actually, here, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you are? Oh, hi. I'm just curious why you would want to build a house there where you're gonna be in the middle of everybody's backyard.
If you can see.
Well, why don't we, if we could, if you wouldn't mind, and you, if you could state your name, please, and your address?
My name is Eric Myra, Mr. Chairman, board members, David, thanks for allowing me to speak. And you can see, we've developed a plan for a home on this lot using the setbacks that were approved by the city and there's backyards surrounding us. But due to, you know, the shape of this York Court, it's a cul-de-sac and we'd be facing the cul-de-sac, garage would face the cul-de-sac and our backyard would be facing other people's backyards. So I guess I would think that'd be a pretty pleasant view for everybody.
Okay, I'm on.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Dewey, if you may, let us hear from the applicant first and then I will come back to you to get your questions and comments so we can get the understanding of what's being proposed here. So thank you for your patience.
Guess, you know, that's, I'm just addressing your concern. It looks like it's actually a bigger lot than the rest of the lots.
It is, yep.
And, you know, our home would be kind of not within ten feet of somebody else's house. You know, there's some pretty small lots in this development and it's a large enough lot that I think that it'd look pretty appealing and it would be well-kept, I mean, mowed and not let brush grow up in the back. And I don't know, I provided this, we had Arrow Survey, surveying company, do refine, you know, reconfigure or find the markers for the survey and then draw it out and show that it's an official survey and then along with a developer, which is La Salle Homes, putting a home on, a single, you know, single-level home that is a normal patio-type home. As we age, I love to have one level, no stairs. I work for North and Memorial Health, here in the Brainerd region and I've hauled a lot of people up and downstairs and I don't like stairs.
I don't see any dimensions for those setbacks, but I assume they meet city, the city code, David?
Maybe David can clarify that.
Side, side back?
Yep, so it's in, it's in the surveyor's notes, twenty, twenty and five and twenty-five. So that's what that inline, the dash line inside would be identifying as the setbacks. And then in the surveyor notes, they call out the front yard of twenty, side yard of five and your yard of twenty-five.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just, again, I think maybe just a little background we didn't have in the findings of fact. Mr. Myra has, I guess, had purchased this lot back in two thousand, like, seventeen?
I was thinking it was two thousand and fifteen, but, you know, it's been a while and now we're in a position to build this home.
And at that time, he did originally, he did reach out to the city at the time, I think, prior to actually purchasing it.
Right.
And at the time, talked to then-city planner Mark Osgarden and I think he was, talked to Paul, who was at that time either just becoming the city engineer or was assistant city engineer. And at that time, both gentlemen did agree that this was a buildable lot. Really what it came up to is when Mr. Myra reached out to myself and James, started discussing the actual plan for building it, that's when it kind of came up to, oh, wait a minute, this is platted as an outlot. Before we can proceed, we'll need to legally change this to an actual lot before I can, the city can allow Mr. Myra to actually build on the lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky.
And we won't be parking any RVs in the yard. And there's rules against, you know, I mean, I think that that area's got, probably got some rules about parking in the streets and stuff, but the whole area is being developed right now and so there's a lot of activity going on in that area, but it's gonna be a beautiful, when all the rest of the lots are, got homes on them, it's gonna be a back that cul-de-sac or whatever that little island is in the middle of that York Court. If the city isn't maintaining that, I'm gonna be out there mowing that thing and making it look nice.
All right, is there anything?
With permission.
Yeah, exactly, is there anything further you'd like to say about your project before we move to?
No, and I think if there's more information that needs to be gathered up, you know, I can supply that. We're looking at construction probably June, but the way things are going, it may be delayed to July, but kind of moving forward on, pretty excited.
Very good, okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Myra.
Thank you.
Ms. Dewey, you had, you had some comments you'd like to make on this?
I didn't have concerns so much as curiosity, I guess. I didn't really understand what this was all about. And he answered a question for me about building a single-level home, which will fit in nicely with the rest of us older folks who live up the street. Of course, there's a lot of two-level homes in that area too. But like I said, it was mostly just curiosity. I have no concerns about this at all. And I have a question, I know you maybe can't answer it now, but as more people move in to the area where we're at, will they be taking care of York Court once there are more people on it? Because nobody comes out there and mows, nothing is done out there, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I think part of that, and I can maybe ask Mr. Chair, is part of that is right now is there have been, again, some changes in the developer out there, issues we've had with the developer. But again, as they're developed and yes, you know, it'll become the property owner's responsibility to maintain that. With everything else, just like the rest of the city, there is some grass on boulevards. It would be the responsibility of those property owners to make sure they're mowing the boulevards, clearing the sidewalks of snow, just like anywhere else in the community. And then the streets will be maintained by the city.
I think when I was, if I may, when I first started looking at the property, it was being mowed, but I think with all the activity going on, maybe the city is, you know, taking a break from that and I might be, you know, I think even like there's two houses that just are being built on the back side on this, on the bottom of the picture there. And I'm sure those people will be mowing part of that boulevard, if you want to call it that. And in the setback, we're probably thirty feet back from the street if I'm, I'd have to check our information, but I think in the rules, it's like a twenty-foot setback minimum. So we're going extra, they'll have a little more front yard. I like green grass, mowing, you know?
Very good, okay, well, thank you. And Ms. Dewey, thank you very much as well for your comments. Any questions from the commission? For the applicant or for Ms. Dewey? James, is there anybody online other than Commissioner?
There is not.
Calruss up there, it's all right, so we're. And Matt, do you have any questions or comments, certainly chime in as well, obviously?
Ready to rep, baby?
All right. So with that, then I'm gonna close public hearing at seven forty-nine. I can't read my clock from here and to the discussion from the commission. Comments from the commission? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to thank Mr. Myra for, I know there's a lot of land out there in the world, but I'd like to, we'd like to thank you for building your retirement home in our fair city. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve this preliminary plat with no alterations or conditions.
Motion made, is there a second? Erickson? All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Chansky, could you do roll call, please?
Woodward?
Yes.
Calruss?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Gorham?
Yes.
And Duval?
Yes, motion carries and next steps on that, and I. Yes, motion carries, and next steps on that, and I, if I might, just to, just to reiterate that there was a, a recommended change in the legal on that, correct?
Yep, we'll have that corrected for the final.
Okay, next steps, please, for?
Yep, and again, with this one as well, this preliminary with the commission's recommendation will go before the council on May 3rd, and then he'll be eligible to submit for his final plat back to the planning commission.
Very good, all right, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Myra, and thank you, Ms. Dewey. Item D, new business, we have a patio resolution. Chansky, could you set that up for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, my pleasure. So the reason I'm bringing this, this proposed resolution to the commission this evening is for a couple of reasons. First, over the last 12 months, obviously, we've seen a significant change in a central element of our societal structure, and that's outdoor dining, or just I should say dining in general. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, bars and restaurants in the state of Minnesota have been closed twice to ingress egress use occupancy by members of the public. In addition to the financial strain, these closures, as well as an occupancy restrictions, have put on our service industry, have seen an increased desire for outdoor dining options. Even as we begin, begin to see the light at the end of the tunnel with the pandemic, the increased desire for outdoor dining options appears to be here for the long haul. Currently, our ordinance restricts the size of patios to 30% of the total customer floor area with an establishment that serves alcohol, and it's also by conditional, approved only by conditional use. For many of our restaurants and bars, this restriction provides little increase to customer service area, especially in a world of social distancing and occupancy restrictions. Before you tonight, after we review this, there are two conditional use permit applications for patios that have been considered for consideration by the commission. Both of these are requesting patios with a size of more than 30% of their floor area. Therefore, they don't meet the, or criteria of the ordinance. However, staff, we believe that neither of these requested patios would be an aesthetic or functional detriment to the community or surrounding businesses. Additionally, restricting both of these establishments to patios that do not exceed 30% of the total customer floor area would serve them very little, especially in a post-COVID world. So what I'm, what we as staff are requesting is that you consider this attached resolution. And what this resolution does is that it temporarily lifts the restrictions on the size of patios and outdoor dining areas, at least until, at least until December 31st of 2021. What we'd request are three actions. First is tonight would be to recommend adoption of this resolution to the city council. Then approve the two pending conditional use permit requests with the sizes of patios that they have requested contingent on, obviously, the adoption of the resolution by the city council. And then, thirdly, as part of the zoning, zoning code update that we are currently going through, revise the patio size restriction to increase the allowable size of patios and outdoor dining areas. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I did a little research regarding patios. I looked up a lot of our neighbors, I looked at the city of Baxter, Nisswa, Pequot, Little Falls, and also Detroit Lakes. None of those cities in their zoning codes speak to the size of outdoor dining areas at all. We are the only city that goes into a restriction, and actually, none of them even have it as a conditional use. It's permitted by right. The only conditions you'll see are similar to ours about things that there has to be at least a barrier of 42 inches, and it has to go through main ingress, ingress through the, through the primary structure. And that really comes from the bill, the state building code requires those things, and they're just tied into the ordinance. Beyond that, they have, they have no requirements. Our code goes beyond and beyond pretty much any other code we saw. One, by making them conditional uses, by limiting it to 30%, and then also outlining all the other 16-plus restrictions that you see in the, in the, as, as James put in the findings of fact for the two conditional use permits we'll be considering shortly. So again, all we're requesting here is we're not necessarily requesting you to scrap the whole ordinance at this time. We're just requesting that the commission consider recommending this resolution that just on the size perspective. It'll still be, it'll still be a conditional use permit. They would still have to, any that are brought forward to the commission over this next year, still have to meet all the other requirements as listed in the code, it's just that the size requirement would be lifted. And Mr. Chair, at this time, I'll take any questions that the commission has.
Very good, thank you, David. Questions of clarification? For staff, from staff? None, and clarification for the chair, are we, is this a hearing item or discussion item?
This would be an item we would be looking for, due to the fact that we have two pending, there's no public hearing. So really just discuss amongst the commission and then decide if you want to recommend this to the city council for approval.
Any questions, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, if this is granted, how is this going to affect someone's capital investment in their property? Say somebody goes and puts in the necessary fencing to create their perimeter, to drive the traffic through their establishment, and then into their outdoor. If they make that investment and it expires December 31st, are they going to be required to remove that, or will we grant them? We are expecting to be able to roll into our new plan and have, have hopefully no restrictions on this. But in the event that that doesn't happen, would these people be faced with having to remove that at the end of this term? At the end of?
I can address that, Mr. Chair. At this point, how, how I see it would be, the conditional use permits would then have been approved with that standard, and therefore would, you know, we'd, they would essentially, if this expires on December 31st of 2021, and the new code isn't in place, they would be considered legal nonconforming, but they would not be made to remove them.
Excellent.
Jaeger?
Mr. Chair, I can't think of a possible reason why, why there would be a size to relationship to brick and mortar. So I will be in favor of this resolution, just letting you know where I stand on this.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Calrus.
Mr. Calrus.
I'd just like to add, kind of building off Commissioner Jaeger's point. My wife and I have lived in Brainerd area for three years. If you've never been to a patio in Brainerd, we always go to Baxter, up to Nisswa, something like that. So I think this is really beneficial for this city. I just want to say I support it as well.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Calrus. So our, our action here is to make a recommendation to staff or to the city council in the form of a resolution. So that, I would guess we'd be looking for a motion to adopt this resolution or forward this resolution to the city council. Anyone?
I'd like to make a motion that we further the, send the resolution to the, to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Woodward, any discussion on that?
I have, I have one question.
Mr. Foley?
As far as the, on the northeast bar here, looks like the patio would be outside directly next door to an apartment building, is that correct?
It's a building that has an apartment on top of it.
Okay.
Just to make sure I know what we're talking about, we're going to, we're going to have two more discussions right now.
Yep, we will.
Okay.
We will come to the conditional use permits in a minute, with that point of clarification.
Okay.
So, we have motion table, second, any other discussion, questions? All right, Mr. Chansky, can you please do roll call?
Woodward?
Yes.
Calrus?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Gorham? And Duval?
Yes, that motion passes, we will forward that on to city council. Sure, enthusiastic, sure. Who are you betches? All right, we will move on to conditional use permits now. We have a conditional use permit from CC's Bar, LALC. David, can you set that up for us?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm going to let.
Spinning from our resolution now.
I'm going to let Assistant Planner James Kronvik, I'm going to take a little break here, and he's the one who worked, did most of the work on these, I'm going to let him walk you through this.
Okay, so Cheyenne Miles has submitted a request on behalf of CC's Bar, located at 121 Washington Street Northeast, for a conditional use permit to construct an outdoor patio for serving alcohol when accessory to a bar. So 121 Washington Street Northeast is located in a B4 general business district. The operation of a bar in a B4 district is permitted, is a permitted use per section 515-63-2 of the Code of Ordinances. The operation of an outdoor patio for serving alcohol when accessory to a restaurant and/or bar requires a conditional use permit within a B4 district. The out, the proposed outdoor patio includes a 1,197-square-foot patio on the north side of the building with two exit gates operable from the patio only. The proposed outdoor patio must meet the following criteria as required by the section of code. So the applicant submits a site plan in accordance with section 5, has to demonstrate the location types of tables, trash receptacles, and weight stations. So the applicant has submitted that site plan, and I'll show that after talking about these 16 different things that have to be met. Access shall be provided only via the principal building. So right now, there currently is only a maintenance door that would have access to this area, but the applicant said that they are ready, if this conditional use permit is passed, to go ahead and replace that with a glass door that directly opens to the proposed patio area from the principal building. The size of the area is restricted to 30% of the total customer floor area, which we just made a motion to, to grant the resolution. The proposed patio size will be 64% of the principal structure. Another part that it asks for is the area screened from view from residential uses in accordance with section 20. So the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high fence to screen from view. With that, I'll show you what proposed panel looks like here. So that's what they had proposed, to screen from view. Behind CC's Bar is a parking lot currently for the area, and then behind that is some residential uses. Next part is all lighting shall be hooded and directed away from adjacent residential uses in accordance with section 18. Currently, there are no adjacent residential uses. There may be the one above the, right behind the skillet bar there, but they have not proposed any new lighting in this area. The applicant also demonstrates that pedestrian circulation is not disrupted as a result of the area. So the plan that I'll be showing you after this includes a six-foot walkway for access to the rear entrance. So this walkway has been reviewed by the building official as well as the fire marshal in order to meet ADA accessibility and emergency escape. And there are no proposed structures that would overhang or extend out to the proposed patio. Another requirement is that the area is surfaced with concrete, asphalt, decorative pavers. So this area right now is surfaced with concrete. Another part of it is storage furniture shall not be permitted outdoors between November 1st and March 31st. So the applicant must be compliant with this condition, the proposed furniture is movable. Additional off-street parking may be required pursuant to the requirements set forth in section 22. In the B4 district, it is exempt from off-street parking. It does have a large parking lot to the north for approximately 40 automobiles. Also, closed-lid refuse containers are to be provided, the plan includes three containers. So as to deter free passage of any person or substances beyond the barriers, a barrier of a minimum of 36 inches made of wood, vinyl, iron, brick, natural stone, or other approved materials shall be provided. So the applicant is proposing the six-foot wood panel, paneled fence that I had shown earlier. Smoking in the area, if allowed by a business owner, is permitted, provided the area is in compliance with the Minnesota Freedom to Breathe Act of 2017. The applicant must be compliant. The, another part of it is the building official shall review the suitability of the area in light of the applicable fire, building, and life safety codes, and adequacy of the proposed to provide the safety of persons on the premises. The building official will review the fence permit application. He had talked about the fence would have to be required to be anchored and to meet a 90 mile-per-hour wind design, requirements of the building code. The fire marshal did review the plan and required an added emergency exit on the north side of the patio. Originally, they had provided a plan that only had one exit, and they did add this to the, to the new plan here. There shall be no amplified live music allowed in the area, except in the case of special event, which requires a permit, the applicant must be compliant with this condition. And all licenses required for serving alcohol specified in the city code shall be obtained. The applicant was approved for a Class 1 bar license by the Brainerd City Council on April 5th, 2021. As of writing this, no one has contacted the community development department with concerns or objections to the conditional use permit. So it's a staff recommendation to approve the CUP application. The application must meet all interior requirements from the building official for access to the outdoor patio. Prior to patio use, a space must be inspected by the building official as well as the fire marshal.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I said two things.
Yes, Mr. Chansky.
One would just be in that, in our staff opinion, also, there would add one other condition, again, that it's be, is contingent on the council approving the resolution, otherwise, they must be within that 30%. And then we asked what that is, if the council were to deny it, and does not be required to come back to the commission, just work with staff to get that to the 30%. The other thing I want to point out, I think it was Mr. Gorham pointed out there about the adjacent apartment building, there is one above the skillet. However, I will just point out that that actually apartment is legal nonconforming. While it is a residence, you could argue that, that use is legal nonconforming. If that, it really is in kind of a way, you could argue that it shouldn't be there. And when it comes to screening, unless we put a roof over this thing, which defeats the purpose of a patio, it's kind of difficult. I think the applicant is doing their best to screen this bar. Again, again, it's only that one resident next door.
They would have gotten a notice though, correct?
They would have.
All righty, thank you. So are there any questions of clarification for staff before we move public hearing? Is there anyone online, is my question, other than?
Here's only Mr. Dean.
Commissioner Calrus? Hearing none, let's open public hearing at 8:08. And anyone willing to, or interested in speaking to this proposal can do so at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this proposal? Anyone willing to, wanting to speak to this proposal number two? And going third time, closing public hearing at 8:09. So, back to commission here for discussion? Any comments or questions? All right, looks pretty straightforward. Again, just to clarify, we would be looking for a motion to approve the CUP application contingent upon council passing and approving the resolution that we just spoke to. If such approval is not given, we would be instructing staff to work with the applicant to come up with a compliant conditional use permit that meets the current ordinance.
And then just the other two things of the, I think it's worthwhile just adding it in there, of review and approval from the building official as well as the fire marshal for when, when installation occurs.
So the staff recommendations here with those amended languages, is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Erickson, second?
Jaeger, second.
Jaeger, second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, what's in the middle of this?
Mr. Chair, what's in the middle of the site plan? Does anyone have a guess?
The middle of the site plan, they had proposed a picnic table in that area.
Okay.
That like an umbrella?
With an umbrella.
I think it's an old Chrysler, I'm pretty sure. The Okadoba. Excuse me, Mr. Ford. Any other questions on that? Any other discussion? Alright, Mr. Chansky, can you take us to roll call place?
Woodward.
Yes.
Calriss.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Gorm.
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes, that motion carries. Next steps for the applicant not present, but that will go where?
Council on May third for approval.
Very good, okay, thank you. We now have a similar conditional use permit request for O'Nearies Irish Pub, David or James?
Yep, obviously with James and James since we already, if it's okay with the commission, as he already read the can, all the conditions, he can just allude to whether or not they meet the condition.
Okay, so Denise Rathman has submitted a request on behalf of O'Nearies Irish Pub located at three oh five Seventh Street South. For a conditional use permit to construct an outdoor patio for serving alcohol when accessory to a bar. So three oh five Cell Seventh Street is located in a B3 central business district. Just like in the B4, the operation of bar in B3 is permitted use in section five fifteen dash sixty-two dash two. And the operation of outdoor patio for serving alcohol when accessory to a restaurant and or bar requires a conditional use permit in the B3 district. So this patio, proposed patio would be one thousand twenty square, twenty square feet, it'd be on the east side of the building. Again, would have two exit gates operable from the patio only. The proposed patio currently exists from, exists from the two thousand twenty extension of premises permit. O'Nearies Irish Pub would like to make their current patio permanent. So their patio meets all this, essentially the same criteria. The proposed patio size will be sixty-four percent of the principal structure. And I'll show you a picture here of the existing patio. So it's a vinyl fence of six feet which meets the screening requirements, it's also a paved asphalt area. And here's a site plan, this has also been reviewed by the building official. Again, this one would have to have an added door which Denise is ready to do once the approval of the CUP is granted. This is the, the section of the door is, is kind of where the start area is. And then they had two gates here which was a requirement from the fire marshal. And again, this, if, if the, the CUP is approved, it would have to. Be inspected by the fire marshal and building official. So as of writing this, one party has contacted the community development department and had no concerns or objections with the conditional use permit. His staff recommends approval of the conditional use application. The applicant must meet all interior requirements from the building official for access to the outdoor patio. Prior to patio use, the space must be inspected by the city of Brainerd building official and fire marshal. Again, they would be required to also apply for the fence permit that would have to meet the wind requirements from the building official as well.
Alright, thank you, James, and again, we're asking for contingent approval. And authorizing staff, so at this point in time, eight fifteen, I'd like to open the public hearing. Again, is there anybody online other than our faithful commissioner Calriss there?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
And no one else here, so at this point in time, then eight, eight fifteen and a half. Close the public hearing and bring that back to the commission for discussion.
Mr. Chair, may I just add one thing?
Yes, sir.
When, when, as, as James alluded to, Ms. Rathman, she built this patio initially as part of last year when the council. Passed a similar resolution to one you recommended, that allowed extensions for premises. This was during the period where outdoor service was only, or you only could have outdoor and limited inside. And actually got comments from the, from few people that worked in the area, especially at Bremer Bank, on how it actually was, it was a nice improvement. To that area and kind of again enclosed it and you're not necessarily seeing people outside and. You still in the past may might see people in, in, in the alley, they're drinking in the alley, they weren't supposed to be out there smoking and. The patio added a nice, got a nice little buffer and added some aesthetic improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky, is there discussion or questions from the commission?
I have one question.
Mr. Gorm.
Is the existing patio space, that's more than, I assume that's more than thirty percent of their indoor area?
Correct, it's sixty-four percent, so actually the same percent, same percentage as CC's actually.
Is it already non-conforming or is that covered by last year's?
So what happened is last year's, it technically expired on October thirty-first. But then again, obviously we had that early snowfall, so the patio season ended. And now as we're getting back into patio season, that's where Ms. Rathman came forward and saying she wanted to make this patio now permanent. Per the city code and that's where we're bringing this conditional use per, permit forward now.
That helps, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Erickson.
In the picture there, in the corner, I guess it'd be the northeast corner, there's kind of a open space there by the meter and there's a parking sign, is there?
So she, so she owns, Ms. Rathman owns.
Very hard to see.
That whole alley, so right out, just on that side, yeah, so, I don't know if I can.
And the only reason I noticed it, if I, on Google Earth, there's a car parked back in there.
Yeah, so Ms. Rathman actually owns from right where this crack is, the asphalt. Just then I saw the picture, there's a building right here. And that lot extends to this whole area back over here.
If you measure on Google Earth, it's about forty-two feet and what she's shown here is about thirty, so it leaves about a twelve foot.
Yeah, she, she left purposely when she designed this, left a little bit of an area.
So she could park herself back.
So she could park for, for deliveries and such as.
Okay, perfect. I was thinking, are we taking away any kind of parking space or anything?
No, and then again, in this area, it's also still B3, so it is exempt for parking and she actually also has about. I want to say it's six or seven parking spots directly in front of her bar on the street.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion for continued approval of the CUP application, all of the criteria. Outlined here, meeting for the building inspector and the fire marshal. And authorizing staff to work with the applicant to comply if council does not approve the resolution, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to that effect. That the proper authorities would approve of it and they would work with staff as discussed and also that. It doesn't appear there are any encroachments and it's also in their property, but if it was ever found that it was to encroach upon the city alley or someone else's property. That would have to be rectified.
I have a motion, tables are second?
Second Jaeger.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give that to Woodward, I think she was quicker on the draw, man. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Chansky, could you do roll call please?
Woodward.
Yes.
Calriss.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Gorm. Duval.
Yes, that one passes, and next steps for that?
Same as before, it'll go before the council on May third for approval.
Do we have time for a five-minute recess?
And we can take the brief recess here and then reconvene at eight twenty-five. Recession, stretch.
Yep.
Hey, I was thinking, they get cut down trees, they gotta sit through a year's worth of planting and zoning.
That would take care of the problem right there, congratulations.
Chopping a tree.
Did I hear that correctly, that they cannot store their furniture in the winter behind that six-foot fence?
That's a little wacko, but.
Is that what it says, is that what I heard? Behind the like six-foot fence, privacy fence, they can't store.
Am I supposed to hit the?
Okay, so hang on to that thought because what was the recommendation three here, right? Recommendation three was to, let's come up with a way to resolve this.
Yeah.
Why do you think Sarah Hagee's shop parks a trailer? Trailer right there? It's a lot of patio stuff, it's.
That's a smart way to do it.
For patio stuff goes.
Okay.
But, yeah. I, during research, I had no idea where this ordinance came from, so. Again, we're muted, right?
Yep.
My guess is what, is what happened, it's like shit must have just about gone missing at some point.
Something.
No, no.
Well, I wonder if it's so you couldn't open like a, you couldn't build a little eight-foot by ten-foot building? To run your outside bar from.
Which then, I would, I would argue, well then if you want to have a five-month-a-year business. You know, granted, I know.
Well, I think it's really funny, we give them till December thirty-first, that is.
You know we're not Miami.
Right.
But that's, you see those all over the place in Miami, it's a hut big enough for a bar.
Yeah, exactly.
And then it's just a patio.
Right.
I feel like Don's. Saying I'm killing it.
You're, you're killing it.
I'm killing it.
Yeah, you're doing, you're doing well. You're doing, you, you got it, man. I'm a believer.
Killing it. Killing me.
Team Duval, team Duval, let it be known.
Apparently we're not muted on YouTube. Oh, we're not muted on YouTube. Oh, well.
It's hard to make these meetings exciting.
Yeah.
Just given the, I mean, we are playing it exciting, but. Can be kind of dry.
You know, we can just, we can, we can just remind the council that if they ever.
You bet, absolutely.
If on the third, they complain about how many items they have, they can just say, did you want to? We could have spent three hours them discussing all these things.
One of the greatest musicals of all time.
Can't argue that.
Nope, not at all. And our neighbor, really, from Mason City, Iowa, I mean, if you think about it, he's a neighbor. We're famous, we're almost famous.
Why don't we just advance? The clock just a tick here and we will call ourselves back to order at eight twenty-four. So at this point in time, our next item is new business G text amendment item on section nine hundred, David, can you set this up for us, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so Cheryl Strand of fifteen eighteen Quince. She submitted a text amendment request to section nine hundred of the city code. What her request is to amend section nine hundred by either redefining commercial kennel. Or developing a new category of licensure for animal rescue or in-home, animal rescue. Excuse me. This little background, currently the ordinance defines commercial kennel as, as a, anyone having. Four or should say five animals or more mainly dogs or cats or chickens. And it really kind of defines it for any reason or any purpose. So having more than four animals, specifically dogs, cats, chickens. Is considered a commercial kennel. And currently, the only areas in our code that are allowed for commercial kennels. Are in our, some of our commercial districts or industrial districts and that is part of a pet hospital or clinic, pet clinic. Or in some of our rural agricultural areas. In her application, Ms. Strand did state a few things, she said she would like our city quote, quote, would like our city ordinance to become. Up to date and current with state and federal, I think it's, I think some guidelines aligned with the allowance of most cities across the country. She also states, quote, "The majority of adopted dogs are transferred to in-home rescue or foster homes assigned. Through these rescues and adopted out after necessary vetting. Any needed surgeries and behavioral observations, so they go to the appropriate home." Let's give a little bit. Kind of procedural here, since this is a text amendment request, it's not, doesn't fall under. The jurisdiction of most land use requests or variances, conditional use permits, et cetera, so it's not. Under the purview of the sixty-day rule. So how the city has processed these requests in the past, the process has been to really. First, for the planning commission maybe discuss it, discuss if you wanted to, if you do indeed want to take up this ordinance amendment request or not. If you, you know, whether or not you're open to amending the ordinance or you want to leave it as is. If you want to leave it as is, the recommendation, you have, make a recommendation to do so. That would go to the, to the city council for their approval. Whether or not to agree with the commission or send it back for actual review. If you, if the commission does choose to consider amending the ordinance. What I'd like to do tonight is have a discussion, kind of what kind of amendments would you be looking for? Then we, staff would then go make some amendments, make a proposed ordinance language. That the commission would then, during your May meeting, which is May twenty, it's May twenty-first, or May nineteenth. May nineteenth, I believe. You would then hold a public hearing and consider that ordinance language at that time. Again, so at this time, our ordinance again is reminders, says four, pretty much you can have four, up to four animals. And it doesn't really matter what district you're in. I did do a little research into other communities of size or comparable. All the, all the community, community that looked, looked at Detroit Lakes, Fergus Falls, Baxter, Nisswa, Pequot. They all had pretty much very similar language, they didn't mention any kind of in-home rescue or. Allowed for essentially a commercial kennel of any kind in a residential area. Most of the actual cities, either they did not, Nisswa and Pequot Lakes didn't list a limit. To the number of dogs you can have. I might put some conjecture to that, that in Pequot and Nisswa, you do have larger lot sizes, that might mean more rural areas. So that may have to do with that. In Fergus Falls. They, it's not really, not really mentioned either. In Detroit Lakes, they allow for two to three animals depending on whether or not. Your animal is spayed or neutered, so if it's neutered, you can have three, if it's two, if it's spay, if it's not neutered or spayed, you only can have two. And then Baxter, they define kennel as having three or more, or more than three dogs. So you can have up to three, so one fewer than here. And then commercial kennels are only allowed as an interim use in their RS rural staging and rural residential areas. And they have to have, and in those areas again, they're, they're looking at larger lot sizes. And they say that the, the kennel has to be three hundred feet from the front property line. But Midji was the only city, I think comparable that I looked at that actually had some, or some language. And what they spoke to is in there, they have a household limitation of no more than three dogs, no more than three cats. If it's exclusively cats or exclusively dogs. Or four, no more than four if it's a combination of dogs and cats, so similar to the city of Brainerd. They did have a qualified home element. And what this says is a person may request a permit from the city to keep or harbor up to two dogs or two cats, but not both. As part of a qualified home used by organizations for rescue or sheltering of abandoned animals. This is on top of the three to four that you're allowed. The purpose of this section, a qualified home, shall mean, shall mean a home which has received written approval to house abandoned. Or lost animals by an organization involved in the rescue or sheltering of abandoned or lost animals. Or lost animals by an organization involved in the rescue or sheltering of abandoned or lost animals. And which organization has been existence and operating for at least a year. The permit shall allow up to two such animals in addition to the other dogs and cats already kept in the dwelling per section. The permit shall be good for a period of a year. It may be renewed annually, provided there be no violations of the provisions of this article resulting in administration administrative penalty. Or criminal violation being posed on the permit holder. So that is the only language that I seem to find that had anything to do with allowing to. Have additional animals in your residential home beyond those that are already allowed in the ordinance. Um, and then, Mr. Chair, I'll take any questions or comments that the commission has and try to help this guy discuss this discussion the best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Questions or clarification for staff? Mr. Jaeger.
Uh, Mr. Chansky, uh, could you, uh, how how did this come before us? Was this complaint driven? Was this, uh, can you give me a little background on how this got here?
I can give a little background. Um, I'm gonna. Avoid going into too much detail. Um. Ms. Strand, she she submitted this request. Um. And I think part of this has to do is is she she does have more. Um, she actually, she does operate the National Boxer Rescue currently. Um, out of her home. I think she does part of that wants to see um her. Her um operation be under, you know, be legal through city ordinance. But also, um, you know, if any other future rescues may come come, that they would also be allowed. Um, and obviously, if there's an ordinance change, it would be across the board, depending on the kind of ordinance. Um, I think originally she did have discussions with me regarding maybe making a conditional use, interim use. And my recommendation at that time was to it it would be best fit under section nine hundred. Um, the only reason I said that is because once we get into that conditional use, interim use, um, one of we had a couple of problems. Getting the kind of condition use interim use. Then we got to look at every single zoning district in the city individually, which is it's a much bigger task than we're making multiple ordinance amendments. But also, we don't want to get into a situation where our zoning districts contradict or in conflict with section nine hundred. Um, so that's where my recommendation to her is if she if she wanted to submit something that to start with section nine hundred.
Thank you.
Other questions, a clarification, or comments for staff? David, I'm not sure if I heard whether there were any. You know, bounding parameters in the Bemidji ordinance for the permit as far as um, you know, uh, lot size, um. Anything to that effect that did was were there was there examples in that?
There's nothing in their specific ordinance. Um, I read it as it is. I didn't get a chance to pull the actual, try to find the actual permit.
Right.
Um, I think the only thing was is that for the city to sign, the only requirement I could see was that. That in the the applicant also have approval from some kind of other rescue organization. Say much pretty much they have a. Another organization has said, yes, we support this person doing this. That's the only uh requirement that I can see in their ordinance. And then again, they only allow up to two dogs or two cats. It's only an addition of two.
Out uh outside of the permit.
Outside, yeah. So, yeah, so generally, the city, the the city's ordinance is. Um, up to three, or as it's up to three dogs or three cats if they're spade and neutered. Um, four combined. Um, and then if so, if you have, if you have four dogs or two dogs and two cats, you can have an additional two animals. As a um to how to shelter.
As a qualified home.
As a qualified home.
Any other questions? All right, well. So we have before us a request to amend our ordinance. To uh. Either create a new new uh category or in some way be able to. Uh, recognize uh in-home animal rescue. Is there, is there anyone um? Wanting to make a motion to that effect or um? The alternative is that we uh accept that our ordinance is appropriate as is and. We move on. So is there someone that would like to to give voice to amending? Or initiating a process to provide some amended language back to this this commission at a future meeting? I am not hearing. Anybody speaking? In favor of amending? Section nine hundred of our ordinance?
I appreciate the sentiment behind it, absolutely. Mr. Chair, I should say.
Yeah.
I I appreciate the sentiment behind it. As a person, a non-dog owner who gets routinely barked at by my neighbors' dogs when I step out within the three hundred foot. Uh, uh, distance in my home, they start barking at me. I have concerns about more dogs. But I'm not, I I think what she's doing is great. This is great work. So I'm. Yeah, I don't really have anything to offer her, other than just concerned that. That you could just be, uh, you know, creating more nuisance, but. Like what she's, I like the idea. So I don't know, maybe somebody can be more put it forth, uh, the idea more eloquently than I can.
And if I I may, Mr. Chair, this is something that this is a clarification of Ms. Strand's operation. She currently does have more than four animals.
Oh, she does now.
She does now.
Okay.
Um, so at this time, unless a change is made, she would need to come in conformity with the current state code.
Okay, thank you.
So, um. Recognizing this is noble work. Um, how does it fit? Within the city and how does it fit with our ordinance, I guess, is is the question. And we do have. Um. We do have sections of our ordinance where in 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 certain districts where this. This activity, this noble work could conform. Again, what would you had mentioned that in your comments?
I believe it uh.
Rose.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Rural ag.
Rural agriculture culture as an interim use.
And and industrial, wasn't it?
Um.
Industrial as well.
Yeah, but as again, that would be in association with an animal hospital, I believe.
That and that's in a B four district.
That's in a B four. So it could be it could be done in an industrial zone.
Yeah.
Or a rural agricultural zone.
Or B four is an accessory to a vet veterinary clinic.
So back in the, um, Mr. Chair, if I will. You may. Uh, um, back in the nineteen nineties, when I was, we're getting the crowing food crop back when we were at Ninth and Washington. There was where the gotta get this right now, where the existing um laundromat is, that was actually heart, actually had a home there for a while. That was the heart home. And I remember neighbors saying, oh my, this is the worst thing ever. You cannot allow this to happen. And the adjoining church was very opposed to this idea. And, you know, it was no problem at all. It really wasn't. Would you walk by? Would you hear a couple of dogs barking? Yeah, but it was kind of commercial loud area anyhow. So I could almost see it working better in a commercial area than a residential area almost. But then, of course, her whole attention is to have this to kind of be an at-home activity. So I don't know. Not offering much clarity for you.
I guess one other piece of information I can I can add, Mr. Chair, is um. The Department of Minnesota Department, I think it's Animal Health, Board of Animal Health, they do a license, um. Rescues. Um, I went onto their s- uh, website. And what they do, they I I pretended I was going to be an applicant wanting to get licensed. They ask you some specific questions on, you know, do you accept? Um, yeah, strays from from other from municipalities or other associations or outside of the state or? How do you get your animals? Where do you house them? One of the questions they have is, do you do this as part of your personal residence? If it's part of your personal residence, the state does not license you. It kind of sees it, uh, from my understanding, they kind of see you as, well, that's your personal. You know, you're just kind of doing that as a goodwill gesture. And what it actually says is when you click submit after answering your those questions, it says. You know, you don't qualify for a license, contact your, you know, your local municipality for their requirements. Um, so that's that's part of it. Um, I also did reach out um to the Board of Public Health to see or the Animal Board of Health. To see if Ms. Strand was licensed by the state. And because it was an at-home thing, she said that she actually provided me some communication she's had with them that. Um, they didn't weren't weren't licensing her or didn't deem her to need a license at this time because it was an at-home activity.
So again, before us, we have um a request to to amend the zoning um. In order to create a category for animal rescue, in-home animal rescue. So the in-home piece would probably fit the rural ag. It won't fit the industrial. Art kind of a of a.
And and if I also may, Mr. Chair, just also point a clarification, under our current or ordinance, someone could do an in-home rescue. As long as they have fewer than fi- fewer than five dogs and they are registered with the city.
And no cats, um, in that doing the math again, right?
Yes, so it's, yeah, so they, you know, fewer than fewer, I should say, if they have fewer than five animals, doc cats, dog combination. They could do it as long as, as long as they are, there's there's requirements that if they're in the city for X amount of time, they have to be registered. So as long as they met those requirements and had fewer than five animals, they could do an in-home rescue. It's more of the, once you get more five or more animals, that it becomes a problem. Then you have to be in essentially B four related to a clinic in an industrial or in a rural ag.
Mr. Chair.
Erickson.
I'll just weigh in on my thoughts. It, you know, it sounds like we're more less stringent than surrounding communities, communes of similar size. Um, and I think for a residential area, I think four animals is appropriate. And then also hearing that there are, it would be an allowable use in other zones throughout the community. I I think I support keeping the uh ordinance the way it is. Just to indicate my direction on it. Um, and again, agreeing with the sentiment of the noble work.
So we have absent a motion to um to amend, send us down a path of amending section nine hundred. I think I'm. Ready to move on with our agenda.
Mi- Mr. Chair, as this was an actual application that was submitted, I will need a motion that if the commission doesn't want to do this, that you. Do not want to go down that path.
Okay.
Because again, since it was an actual application that was submitted.
It's just an application.
It'll have to be sent, what you would be recommending would be to the city council not to pursue this any further.
All right, then.
I'd make my comments into a form of a motion if that's acceptable.
So we have a motion to uh not amend section nine hundred of the ordinance as discussed. Is there a second? Give it to Mr.
I'll second, thank you.
Jaeger.
Second, my Jaeger. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on uh, Director Chansky, a roll call, please.
Woodward.
Yes.
Calrus.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Goram.
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes, so that the motion passes. And. This time, um, James, do we have anybody online other than our distinguished colleague? All right, distinguished colleague, nice to see you. Um, it so I will quickly open and close, it open at eight forty-five and close public forum. And we can move on to Community Development Director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'll try to be brief as I can. A few updates. Uh, the signed ordinance amendment that was passed by the city council on Monday and will go to into effect this following Monday. Uh, the Garfield CUP amendment and variances were also approved by the city council. Those were considered by the planning commission last month. Um, this is an item, just kind of a heads up, a notification that a special meeting of the planning commission may be requested. Um, like actually likely be requested in May. Uh, to consider a planned unit development request. Uh, this is something that we've been working on. We have staff for about the last. Uh, two years. Um, again, as as no applications have been formally submitted, want to respect um the 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 developer. But I can't say this is going, this is pertains to a a senior living development in the city. Um, so expect more to come on that in the next year. We again, we've been working on this for about two years. They were really pushing to try to get something in the ground in twenty twenty. And then COVID happened and, you know, they were one of the obviously number one affected. Um, areas in our society that was that was hurt. Um, but we were glad to see that they are still looking to be moving forward. So we should be seeing that um in the next month or so. The only other item I have for this evening is just a brief, short discussion from um. From the commission regarding the workshop that is currently scheduled for next month on the twenty eighth. Uh, there are two items listed for that on the agenda for that workshop. The first is for the Swanson Haskamp team to come before you. Um, they're going to be discussing the uh, a memo that kind of sets the direction for the annotated outline. Again, the annotated outline are part of their project is really, it sets the 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 um vision moving forward as they begin to dive into actual text discussion. It kind of sets out the outline for how the new code is going to look and how they're going to address it. Um, so they're gonna start working through, um. Kind of bringing a memo that says, here's the work that they've done. We've had a few technical advisory group meetings over the last few weeks to discuss different issues. And they're going to kind of come and say, this is what was discussed. This is based off of everything we've done, they've done so far and bring some recommendations. In preparation for the annotated outline, which you should see that in May. They anticipate taking meeting at least ninety minutes. Um, could be up to two hours, but again, they're they're asking for at least ninety minutes. They think they can get it done in that time. The second item is an item that the planning commission wished to discuss based off of staff's request. Um, which is food trucks and the food truck, uh, the transit food overlay district. Um, staff, we've got really three, four time allowing items that we really want to address with this ordinance. Um, those being uh uh operational times, operational areas, um, distance from restaurants. And the time allowing discussing potentially um one-time use permits. Right now, um, the permit for a food truck, it's an annual permit. Um, so those are the main two items. I think again with the food truck, we've got those really three specific areas. That fourth item, the the one-time permits kind of as time allows, and I think we can be pretty bang, bang, bang on the on the food truck, keeping it into. Those. Operational areas and working keeping you all on task with that. So the question I have, um.
He was looking at you.
To the commission is that we have tentatively scheduled that com- meeting to start at seven. I kind of looked at that time. Just as again, give the commission a little later start time, little little extra time in the evening before the meeting begins. Um, with that potential schedule, is the commission still comfortable? Starting at seven o'clock or would you like to start a little earlier than that six, you know, the red normal six o'clock time, the six thirty or keep it at seven? I guess I kind of looking to the commission now what works best for all of you for next Wednesday. And we will be in person. In the fire department training room.
What was the, where are you at?
I'm good earlier.
Earlier, is there a, anyone uncomfortable with the doing a six o'clock startup?
Um, six o'clock requires me to make some adjustments or I end up a few minutes late. Um, but. And six thirty would be early enough for me to get everything accomplished and not have to bring in extra help.
I think that's, there's your direction now.
Six thirty?
David, six thirty would work.
Six thirty, and again, that will be in the, I've already arranged for the fire department training room. Got again, allow some spaces spread out and nice screens, projectors there. It's Word twelve, so some of our other meetings with the Swanson Haskamp team, so. Then we'll be six thirty on April twenty eighth.
And our entry there is through the southeast or the east side or, excuse me, the west side.
The west side.
I got a.
Yep, west side.
And north west side.
Kind of aligning, yep. So that's all I have uh for my report, Mr. Chair.
Food trucks to bring samples that night.
And one of the, one of the reasons I will say that, um, you know, we want to have this timely discussion is at this time, we have received. Four approved, three food truck applications, the fourth. they're just, we're just waiting on getting some letting, them letting us know where they actually intend on operating. Once we have that, we'll be approving their application as well.
Thank you, David. Commissioner questions and comments, maybe start, start online with Matt, and we can just kind of roll around the table to Mr. Erickson and on this way. Matt, you got anything for us?
None for me, Mr. Chair. Just glad I could join today.
Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, none for me.
Okay, Mr. Foley. Mr. Woodward.
I'm good.
I've got something. There's been, the parking commission is definitely firing up its activities and becoming a little more public, which is good, and doing their work. And so, you know, naturally, the public is beginning to hear it a little bit, and go, what? But here's my question. I think I saw a dispatch article, and David, you were, you talked about things, parking surveys for the downtown and the central business, the CBD, the central business district down there. You were talking two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, were those the two studies that you were referring to?
It was, I think, two thousand fifteen and two thousand
Two thousand nineteen.
I'm not sure if Mr. Calrus was the one that connected the first one or not. Was that before you or after you? It wasn't you who connected it as the planning intern, I don't believe.
That doesn't sound familiar.
Possible deniability.
We've done two in the last five years, let's put it that way.
And real quickly, the methodology, is it once a day or different times during the day?
Yeah, with both ones, we're pretty similar methodology, where over the course of a week or two, they would go out every day at, you know, I think the one that my planning intern did in twenty nineteen, it was, you know, they did like seven or eight o'clock in the morning, noon, three and five. Kind of those peak time, and then discounted how many, you know, we, they first counted how many spaces there were in that area, in the study area, and then just counted number of cars.
I, I guess my point would be is that I would really encourage the parking commission to do another study. I think the downtown business environment is changing, and it's changing for the better. Every time a business opens, more parking is, is needed. We have Jay's Pizza, which is probably is doing a great business. I say they, there are three to five cars. It, you know, during their, during the peak hours, maybe more. The Food Co-op is adding, I don't know, three, four, five cars, and a couple of employee cars and deliveries, they're adding more. When we, at the Bridge of Harmony, when we bring our lesson program back to a full, full strength next fall, we'll be bringing in about, probably about a hundred families a week. That breaks down to about twenty-five families a day driving a vehicle downtown. I, I think it would really behoove the, the commission to do another survey, to look at the current conditions, because I think they're changing. And I think parking, parking is tightening up. We are hearing stories at the, at the bridge of customers driving around, not finding a place to park. And calling and saying, well, I was going to come to the store, but I couldn't find a place to park. I think if they were to work a little harder, they probably could have found a place to park. But the point is, I think conditions are changing, and I think it would be great for the group to do another survey. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Goram. Mr. Jaeger.
I have nothing.
All right. And I guess my only, I would only have a comment to say that our, our agenda today, the potential for a special meeting coming up. Reports from, permit cycles from Crow Wing County, everything is directing that we're nosing up on housing and development. I think we are poised well for that, where we are in our comp plan with our future land use maps. I'm kind of excited to see us kind of be able to now be be putting a lot of this, this uptick in development and stuff in, into, into play with the tools that we have with the future land use and the comp plan. So it'll be exciting to see that going, and I think it, it bodes well for, for the city of Brainerd as well. Everybody's coming up now out of the hole of two thousand and eight, so good sign. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to the workshop on Wednesday, April twenty eighth, at seven PM in the fire department training room. Is such a motion? Seven, six thirty, I think, someone was paying attention to discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to the meeting at six thirty.
Alrighty, motion by Woodward.
I'll second Jaeger.
He grabbed it. So with that, any discussion? All right, we got to do a roll call.
Woodward.
Yes.
Calrus.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Sure.
Goram.
Yes.
And Duval.
Yes, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.